Good evening. I am Trenae Sorex, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM on this 24th day of October 2023. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Administration Building, School Board Chambers is Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Melnick, and currently on Zoom is Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Ms. Owens, please tell us your reason for being on Zoom.
I am at home for medical reasons.
Thank you. So, please join me in observing a moment of silence. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the adoption, oh, excuse me, student, employee, and public awards of recognition, there are no, there are none tonight, so we're going to move on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and modified. Mr. Callen, and seconded by Mrs. Brown, any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the agenda as presented and modified. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 11 eyes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's report and recognitions. Dr. Robertson, we are looking forward to your report and recognitions tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families. Virginia Beach City Public Schools was recently ranked the fifth-best district in Virginia and one of the best divisions in the country by NISH, a national school ranking service that collects nearly 2.5 million reviews from students, parents, and teachers. One of our students told NISH that teachers here are passionate about their jobs and that they help students strive to be their best selves. And that is so true. I know we hear a fair amount of negative talk in today's world, but it's nice that the majority of students and families are rating us far above most of the school districts in the country. Our first-ever TIDE Coalition Conference was held October 14th at Tallwood High School. Students, staff, and community partners discuss ways to address equity, social-emotional learning, mental health, and civic engagement. Supported by our Office for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, the TIDE Coalition is a community of practice comprised of staff and students from each of our high schools in grades nine through 12. The Coalition's purpose is to provide an opportunity for ongoing engagement to improve programming in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, to identify supports needed to increase students' sense of belonging, to review data that impacts our students and staff, to develop future-ready skills, and capture student voices on topics related to equity, social-emotional learning, mental health, and civic engagement. I encourage this valuable coalition to continue its work making sure our students, parents, and staff feel welcomed, valued, and loved. The Consolidated Benefits Office brought a carnival to the Plaza Annex for the Benefits Open Enrollment Fair on October 7th. More than 350 Virginia Beach City staff, school staff, and family members came and spoke directly with benefit plan providers to get answers to their questions about benefits, and 141 attendees received flu vaccinations at the Be Well Clinic. Consolidated Benefits stayed busy helping fellow staff members with their 2024 elections during the event. Attendees also enjoyed music, carnival games, face paintings, snacks, event swag, and a chance to win raffle prizes donated by some of the benefit plan vendors. The atmosphere was active and fun, as displayed in these photos from the event. We are doing everything we can to address the opioid epidemic that continues to impact lives in our nation and our community. Virginia Beach City Public Schools hosted the "One Pill Can Kill" Substance Abuse Webinar on October 19th. Experts spoke and answered questions from parents about the disturbing trend of youth taking unidentifiable pills with dire consequences. I'd like to thank our partners with Virginia Beach Law Enforcement, the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters, and the Virginia Health Prevention Team for helping us work with families to combat this serious issue. I highly encourage every parent to sit down with their children and watch the recording available on VBschools.com, and it is a most powerful message to prevent tragic consequences as a result of this drug. Finally, students, staff, and community members are invited to discuss how VBCPS is capturing our success as a vehicle to building future-ready learners. Please join us for a town hall event, Charting the Course: Building Pathways to 2030, at 6:00 PM tomorrow night at First Colonial High School. On October 26th, community members can support the Beach Bags Program by dropping off donations from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Pembroke Square Shopping Center. The Virginia Beach Education Foundation is accepting school supplies, non-perishable food that will help students who may not have enough to eat over the weekends and during school vacations. Mark your calendars for the Restock and Roll Drive through school supply giveaways from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on November 15. Families are invited to drive around to the face building behind the Plaza Annex off South Lynn Haven Road and receive backpacks, school supplies, and food, thanks to our community partners and the Office of Family and Community Engagement. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson.
And also have some...
Recognitions? Our assignments.
Yes, so I am pleased that you have accepted our recommendation to name Ebony Cherry, currently an Admin Assistant at Kempson High School, as the new Assistant Principal of Independence Middle School. And Ebony, I see you have some guests.
Yes, sir. So, I have my mom, Lolita. I have my daughter Trinity. I have my husband, Daryl, and I have my sister Katrina.
Well, congratulations. Thank you very much for being here. We're also pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Sharita Priggin, currently an Admin Assistant at Basad Middle School, to be an Assistant Principal at Corporate Land and Middle School. Welcome. I see you have some guests.
I do. I have my daughter Jay, my friend and colleague Yvonne, my friend and colleague Yvonne, my friend and colleague Carrie, and my dear principal, Mr. Paul.
Congratulations to Ebony and Sharita, and thank you to the families and friends for the time you're getting ready to lose with them as they get into administration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes. There are two sets of meeting minutes tonight to approve. The first is September 26, 2023, regular School Board meeting. Are there any modifications to the September 26, 2023 regular School Board meeting minutes as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the September 26, 2023 minutes as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Anderson, seconded by Mrs. Martin. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. A call for a vote to approve the September 26, 2023 minutes as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 eyes.
Thank you. Are there any abstentions?
And we have one abstention, so the motion did pass. 10 eyes and one abstention.
I'm abstaining because I was in the hospital trying to get rid of my kidney stone that night.
Well, she did, but not that night. Okay, so next on the agenda is the October 10, 2023, regular School Board meeting. Are there any modifications to the October 10, 2023, regular School Board meeting minutes as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the October 10, 2023 minutes as presented. Mrs. Manning is seconded by...
Second.
Mrs. Brown. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I call for a vote to approve the October 10, 2023 minutes as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 11 eyes. The motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. We're now to the public comments, and we will have them until 8:00 PM. The School Board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section of the School Board agenda is for the School Board to offer an orderly form to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. Members of the public have the opportunity to provide comments during the meeting by signing up to speak from the podium. Other methods of public comment are not offered during the School Board meeting. As a reminder to persons in attendance at tonight's meeting, School Board meeting decorum guidelines prohibit disruption of the meeting through disruptive clapping, calling out by audience members, holding signs that interfere with audience members' ability to view the meeting, or otherwise taking action to communicate with the School Board or disrupt the meeting. I'd like to remind everyone attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on the dais and those in the audience and online, to please speak with respect and kindness. Speakers are responsible for being in the School Board room, auditorium, or online when they are called to speak. Speakers will be called up three at a time. When an in-person speaker's name is called, the speaker should line up in the aisle to wait for their turn at the podium, so as to efficiently have speakers address the School Board. Speakers lined up for their turn at the podium may take a seat near the podium to wait for their turn to speak. If a speaker is not present when called to speak, or is not online or unable to unmute when called to speak, the School Board at its sole discretion may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comment session. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speakers will be Bradley Fish, Bethany Wilmouth, and Shaila Harlacher.
Nine months ago, when I first spoke at a meeting, I'll be completely honest, I did not know who I would be finding serving this board. I looked with curious contempt at everyone in equal quantities, and it was only after several meetings where I became accustomed to who was friend and who was foe. I never would have guessed that my first perceptions were more correct than they were false, and they did not have to be either. In the end, though, I was right to look on with contempt to most of you. I was right to. What you have done is unacceptable, passing policies that we have outlined as transphobic and exclusionary, policies that do not deserve the position of law. It is unacceptable. How could it be otherwise? And what do you expect us to do with your tears, your tears which will wet the board's meeting room for a few minutes before drying away? They might have a sentimental value to you, but what value do they have that can protect trans lives? They lack the utility that we need to improve the world, not make it worse. The efforts we have put in are not going to go away. You have all seen firsthand how we work tirelessly, researching, organizing, and fighting back our own tears to be here in this room that reeks of discrimination. Do not patronize us with your tears. Do something with the power that you have to make a change. If you do not, then somebody else will. But no, you have decided that posturing for votes is more important, and for what? This is a humble office that sits before me, so in realizing that, maybe you could do something with the power you do have. It is never too late to do the right thing. It is never too late to change your mind and stand up for what you have to know is right. I am tired. I am tired of going up to this board and begging for a scrap of decency. I am tired of having to posture endlessly. I am just a student. I want to have good grades. I want to go to college. I want to have a secure life. Yet, here I am, and there you are, me at the podium begging once more, and you at your newly refurbished desk deciding which students will be treated like people with their own freedoms and which will be forced to go home to families that no longer love them. If you are not disgusted with yourselves, then you deserve no elected office at all. You deserve no ability in choosing how others will have to live. You do not deserve a single bit of the power that you do possess. So be disgusted. Take a stand and try to prevent tragedies before they unfold. Prevention is the best medicine. It is time that we start to take it.
Our next speaker is Bethany Wilmouth, Shaila Harlacher, and then Hannah Tazak.
My name is Bethany Wilmouth, and the decision made at the last meeting is beyond heartbreaking. I've been contemplating what to say here for days. I could just accept what happened, not go to this meeting, just leave without a single showing of any grievances. Maybe I could repeat the same facts, statistics, and personal stories you've been hearing for a month. Maybe I could express my anger, my sadness, my devastation. I could remind you all that you have put people's lives at stake through this decision, and for what exactly. But what I realize is that I've never quite focused on the other mindset. I've never truly asked how this vote makes you feel, how our stories, how the real stories of others make you feel. So, how are you? When I gave you all the story of Eden Knight back in March, a woman who had recently committed suicide due to the abusive treatment she'd received after being outed as transgender, how did that make you feel? When transgender students from our area have come up here and testified, telling us about their unsupportive parents, telling us about the stress and pain of being outed, telling us about how they contemplated suicide, telling us about how the people who raised them all of their lives refused to even look at them with the same love and care as they would a couple of hours ago before they'd been unmasked, how did that make you feel? When I tell you that queer kids from unaccepting schools tend to have a higher risk of attempting suicide, what emotion is provoked in you? Based on the decisions you make and what you spew from behind your desks, I can only assume that you feel nothing at these stories, at these facts. I know anybody who fully absorbed what I've just said, acknowledged what had happened, and even took notice of the slightest amount of pain inflicted would not have voted for these model policies. I wish more than anything that you could see the faces of people when I tell them about what you have done, faces of shock, faces of anger, faces of devastation, all from students who know people who will be impacted or know that they will be impacted themselves. You will never see those initial reactions. That's why it's so easy for you. You get to turn your head, and you get to pretend you've made the right choice. You get to turn your head and say that's just politics and spit in the faces of every student you have failed. And the same goes for each and every one of these speakers who has been here defending these policies. None of them are students. None of them have transgender children. Some of them don't even have children in our school system, and some of them have no ties to our city whatsoever. They were not impacted. They get to move on. We don't. There is blood on your hands, and we refuse to let the School Board forget that.
Our next speaker is Shaila Harlacher, Hannah Tazak, and Orion Davis.
Hello, members of the School Board. My name is Shaila Harlacher, and I am not just a sophomore at Killam High School. I am a young person who has been personally affected by the 2023 model policies. I stand before you pleading for your understanding and compassion for it seems my heartfelt concerns have fallen on deaf ears. It pains me to witness the disheartening reality that this board may prioritize political expectancy over the well-being of those it should protect. In my previous speeches, I explained the calculated political maneuvering behind the 2023 model policies. Today, I bear my soul again to expose the truth that torments my every waking moment. The students affected by these policies should have been etched into your very core of your being. A sacred duty safeguard their futures. Nights should have been spent restlessly pondering ways to protect them in not pursuits of votes with the use of distortions of God's image or societal pariahs. I am overwhelmed with anxiety when it comes to contemplating the future. The mere thought of checking the news or scrolling through social media fills me with dread as I witness the countless distressing discussions and threats directed at the transgender community. They are heart-wrenching. To illustrate the gravity of this situation, I must share a few excerpts. Quote, "210, 210, that is the number of anti-trans bills proposed in 2023 alone," end quote. These words were published months ago, and the count has since grown, signifying a growing threat. Quote, "You guys want to abuse children," end quote. This quote, able to blatantly misguide, was directed at a Texas political party advocating for the rights of transgender children, not their harm. The right and dignity of students will never infringe upon the rights of parents. It is important to comprehend our basic rights have not diminished anyone else's. We are not slices of pie to be divided. We are human lives deserving of respect, acceptance, and the opportunity to thrive. You've completely brushed off my logical and emotional reaction, show no interest to the stories of my deceased friends, and seem unfazed by my peers' concerns. The people you were meant to protect have been left hanging without the closure they deserve, all for the sake of political gain. It is shamefully selfish and pathetic. Trans people have been around, and they will continue to be around with or without your support. If you cannot pull yourselves together to help us, we will find a way to help ourselves. As you cater to the people that will vote for you, remember...
30 seconds.
...that we will soon be voters, and we will not forget this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hannah Tazak, Orion Davis, and Fabrizio Solis.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Orion Davis. My pronouns are he/him, and I am a senior at Salem High School. At the last meeting, we were told multiple times that we do not know what is best for us because we don't have as much life experience as you. You have more life experience than us, but you have not lived the experiences of a trans person. You have not lived the experience of hearing people mock you with misgendering and transphobic slurs in the bathroom. You have not listened to your friends come to you crying and in fear because they are terrified of what will happen to them now that Youngkins' model policies were passed. You have heard us speak for over a year, heard the statistics, our experiences, our friends' experiences, and the real-life consequences of your actions, and you knew how devastating and damaging this would be, and the majority of you knowingly chose to enact policies that will put many of the students you claim to care about in direct danger. A student going by a different name or pronouns is not dangerous. This is. It sets a precedent that transphobia and blatant discrimination will be acceptable in Virginia Beach schools. It risks exposing all gender queer, transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming students to further harassment and bullying. I am sick of being talked to as though we don't understand ourselves or the model policies. I am sick of being talked to like we are inherently inferior or below you. You do not understand our experiences more than we do. We are told we are overreacting, told we don't face discrimination, in the face of policies that deliberately other and cause harm to transgender and non-binary students. We are regularly called sickening things and threatened and mocked simply for existing under articles or posts about the School Board meetings. I don't want your tears. I don't want your empty words or your half-hearted apologies. I want change. I want justice. I don't understand how you're able to sleep at night knowing what you sacrificed in hopes of gaining votes. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Fabrizio Solis, Robin Crum, and Jay Cook.
Good evening. My name is Fabrizio Solis. At the last meeting, I criticized the model policies for being discriminatory, making it very difficult for students to be referred to by what they want to be referred to by. It's very disappointing to see the School Board make this almost unanimous decision. I understand why. I watch the streams. I hear what you say. I knew you were going to vote them in, but the decision still hit everybody the same. The fact that you have put your own interests over the well-being of VB students is very upsetting to everyone. I care a lot about my trans friends. I don't know what else I could say about them other than that they deserve to be at least considered important when it comes to what they are called. This board has chosen to uphold the parent rather than the student, and that's not right. I know that a lot of my trans friends have a lot of pain in front of them now in your schools. A lot will be detonated for perhaps the rest of the time in VB schools. I'm scared for a lot of my trans friends because situations at home may not allow for them to go by the right name. Even if their parents aren't abusive, they might not agree with the student go by what they're comfortable going by. The student should have been addressed over the parent in this situation because only the student has to go by their own name. It's saddening to see the School Board considering... It's saddening to see what the School Board considers important over the well-being of students. The actions that these policies implement are genuinely harmful, not on a macro level, but to individual students. It makes things so much harder for them, even if they have supportive parents. I'm not really trying to convince you anymore. I'm just letting you know that the damage these policies do is real. Students are hurt when they are referred to by the wrong name. They feel disregarded when their will is ignored, and they are in actual danger when outed. What trans students need right now is to be respected and to be kept in mind, from a person-to-person level all the way to legislation. Trans students are not going away, and they aren't going to be silent. Good evening, and thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Robin Crum, and then Jay Cook.
Hello. Hello, my name is Robin. That isn't my legal name. Are you going to call my mom and tell her that? I am incredibly disappointed. I am also hurt, angry, and embarrassed. You are what passed for adults? You are allowed to vote? How could you think this is a good idea? Kids are scared for their lives, and you just make it worse. You claim that this is parents' rights, but parents' rights to do what? I have a question. What am I supposed to do? My parents were divorced. I haven't seen my father in over a year, but he is still technically one of my guardians. So, will you deny him the right to choose my name despite him being my parent legally? Or will you give him this right despite him not even knowing me? This isn't his choice. This isn't your choice. My name is Robin. This is my choice. A friend of mine spoke here a few weeks ago. In their speech, they pointed out that an LGBTQ youth attempts suicide every 40 years. In their speech, they pointed out that an LGBTQ youth attempts suicide every forty-five seconds. I would like to bring to light a similar statistic. The Trevor Project reports that having at least one accepting adult can reduce the risk of suicide the risk of a suicide attempt among LGBTQs by forty percent. And that bar for acceptance is very low. Most kids' lives will change from just a hug or a high five or being called their name once. Mine has. By just being decent, you could be the difference between life and death for a child. Yet you choose not to. Why? Name one parent who has attempted suicide because their child was going by a different name at school. You can't because it doesn't happen. I can name multiple kids who have attempted suicide because their parents didn't accept them. Forty percent, forty-five percent. How many kids have to die before you do what's right? How many speeches am I gonna have to write? I'm so tired. My friends are so tired. We're all so tired of having to constantly fight. Do you think any of us want to be here? Want to go do our homework or go to clubs or whatever it is normal kids do? I wanna go home and work on my Halloween costume, but I have to be here because apparently everyone except me gets a say in what my name is. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jay Cook.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jay Cook, and I'm a senior at Ocean Lakes High School. I'm transgender, and I'm pansexual. For those of you who don't understand, you can have both agender and asexuality at the same time. They say that there are five stages of grief: denial, anger, bargaining, depression, and acceptance. Over the past two weeks, we have all taken time to grieve. However, in our grief, there was no bargaining, and there will be no acceptance. This is something that will not pass and that will not heal. It will be ever-present in our lives until something is done about it, and we will fluctuate between anger and depression because we know that someone is going to have to get hurt before this gets better. Maybe it will be your feelings, or maybe it will be a vulnerable kid in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. You've wronged us, and now we're forced to play the long game. Someone is going to have to get hurt before this gets better. And when that does happen, when a kid in your district is harassed or harmed, when a kid in your district cries themselves to sleep out of shame or sadness, when there's a real legal case, a case with weight filed against you, when our warnings become reality, go ahead and look us in the eyes and tell us that you did good, that you made the right choice, that it's okay because it could have been worse, that we deserved this. I hope the tears you shed last meeting meant something, and I hope you feel guilty because you are. Thank you.
That was our last student speaker. Our next set of speakers are Kathleen Slindy, Dan Chang, and Paula Chang.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Slindy, the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. My comments tonight address the safety of students and employees in our schools. The NEA article "Teaching While Scared" talks about how violent student outbursts are putting educators at risk. It cites a survey by the American Psychological Association that asked fifteen thousand pre-K to twelve teachers, administrators, school staff, and counselors about their experiences with physical threats and attacks from students and parents. In it, thirty-three percent of students or teachers reported being threatened by a student within that year. Twenty-nine percent reported at least one threat from a parent, and fourteen percent of teachers have been victims of physical violence from students. It also found that administrators who fear repercussions if their discipline data is too high often provide no disciplinary actions for students' behaviors, and often the student is back in the classroom the same or the very next day. I share this with you because incidents like this are happening here in our schools. There are students of all ages and all age groups verbally assaulting, threatening, physically harming, and disrespecting the adults who work with them as well as with other students. And you've heard this from your student speakers. When we have a culture that allows for this kind of injury, learning stops, and the sense of well-being and safety at our schools is destroyed. The policies we have in place are either not being followed or are not working. Since this division prides itself on being data-driven, I hope that school administrators are able to report what is happening without fear of repercussion for their discipline data because these kids are showing us that they are not okay, and we cannot reach them or teach them if we aren't getting the resources we need, and we need real, accurate data to get those resources. The reality is that VB CPS is not fully staffed. We deal with teacher shortages now. To deal with it, we have much larger class sizes. Our substitute requests go unfilled. Many of our new teachers are not yet licensed and have no teaching experience, and even our new administrators are overwhelmed. Supporting our new employees is difficult because our staff is stretched so thin. They're missing their planning, their lunch, and family time just to keep up with all that's expected of them. This adds up to tremendous stress and burnout. An Education Week article states that adults who work in school buildings are overwhelmed and stressed out. The effects are trickling down to their students who are contending with mental health crises of their own. Teachers say the past few years in the classroom have been grueling, and even though there are signs of improvement, surveys still indicate that educators generally are not doing well.
Thirty seconds.
More and more highly qualified professionals are leaving. They're leaving public education not because they want to, but because it's too hard, too draining, and too dangerous to stay. Students and adults deserve to be safe in their classroom and to return unharmed to their families each day, and the children who are in crisis deserve to have a learning environment that meets their needs so they do not harm themselves or others. We need you to act. Invite professionals who work with students daily to give you information and be part of that decision-making process. Make our schools safe for everyone every day so we can do
And that is fine.
what Virginia Beach educators have done so well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, Paula Chang, and Rachel Joyner.
Recently, the VB CPS presented to the city council a proposal for revenue sharing. There was a presentation provided to the public justifying a plan to get more taxpayer funds for the construction of new school buildings. The Ballard PPEA proposal has not been approved. You are operating on an interim agreement with Ballard for fifteen million dollars for complete planning and design work. I don't know the status of this agreement, and I don't know how much has been expended. Mr. Freeman had previously presented the estimates in the CIP were just paper estimates with no actual engineering and design effort put into costs. The rough estimate was seven hundred twenty-five million. The Ballard proposal in the PPA was four hundred thirty. This is three hundred million dollar difference in cost. This is a significant difference in cost with no real quantification of where the savings are going to be coming from. Mr. Freeman could only state that the potential savings were if inflation came down. Here are some issues for the school board and VP CPS leadership should be considering before overpaying taxpayer dollars on building new schools. State of the economy is tenuous at best. Inflation is high, and families are struggling to live their daily lives financially. The student population in Virginia Beach has decreased over the last five years with no estimates that it will increase. The birth rate in the U.S. is decreasing. With the current student population, do the existing schools meet the criteria? Is there a current design that can be used for future school buildings? Does it make sense to redistrict schools? This will provide cost savings in overhead and staffing costs. The Ballard PPEA submitted over a year ago needs to be refreshed with additional increases in material costs, labor, and inflation, et cetera. What does the contract language for cost increase have right now? Would the contract be a firm fixed-price contract? Or is the language in the contract for the taxpayers to pay for any additional cost increases? Citizens are paying more in taxes, and additional funding required to build new, larger schools is a regressive tax to many middle- and lower-income families. Overbuilding by past school board needs does not justify regressive taxes to overbuild new school buildings.
Thirty seconds.
We are already paying increased real estate taxes because the city council did not do its job. You, as a school board, have a responsibility to hold the line on spending and take a look at what is going on with this PPEA. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang, Rachel Joyner, and Matthew Cody Connor.
Hi. First, I'd like to say that it is possible to simultaneously support the model policies and have total respect for trans students, and I would like them to hear that. Proposed changes to Bylaw 147 are an attack on First Amendment rights of adult speakers. For fifteen months, leading to the vote on the governor's model policy, the board majority encouraged groups of organized student speakers who opposed the policies to hijack these meetings on basically a non-agenda topic. For fifteen months of chaos, you never tried to shorten speaker time or fix the unfair policy of giving students priority. Now you are attempting to, as you did twenty-four months ago, to deprive the public of another minute of speaking time. Further, your attempt to adjust student speaker preference is weak at best because the change is so minimal that if there are twenty student speakers signed up, it is more than likely only ten adult speakers will be able to speak by ten o'clock when one does the math. This isn't right. Mrs. Anderson recently took eight minutes again to explain the changes and to why we need only two minutes to speak, defending that time cut so that the board could get your work done. So why didn't you address the problems of speakers interfering with your work time when student speakers opposing Yonkin policies spoke for one to one and a half hours at each meeting? Also, the board, not the public, spent hours picking at words such as nicknames, attempting to predil logic policy, narrowly misrepresenting the grim case, and manipulating student speakers to gym up public support for a vote against these policies to deprive parents of their rights, and you still failed. Students may be starting to see, and I think they are, that they were used because they were promised something that could not be delivered, and they need to have learned that the controlling government hand that gives is the controlling government hand that takes away. Board majority chaos lengthens school board meetings by placing politics over the responsibility to open schools for students and staff with clear regulations in place. You wasted hundreds of administrators of hours, likely tens of thousands of salary dollars, with endless political games. Administrators should have been working on academic and policy implementation, and thus it was you, not the public, preventing them from getting their work done. In the end, you voted for regulations which do reflect model policies. Two of you even cited their constituent desires for these policies when they voted for them. So now how do you justify your delays and your opposition to your district constituents
Thirty seconds.
and their stated desire? You wasted their time, their money, the academic needs of their students for months trying to subvert your constituents' expectations, and now you're considering cutting speaker time? No, adjust the student preference and keep speaker time unchanged. Do your real work, and you'll be less likely to see us here speaking up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rachel Joyner, Matthew Cody Connor, and Darrell Clark.
Board members, your decision to pass the 2023 model policies comes as no surprise, but I can't say this expectation made it any easier to hear. Even knowing our fight was far from over, I was not prepared for my heart to shatter upon seeing these students feel absolutely helpless after the last meeting. And although my rights as an adult transgender woman aren't being directly affected by this decision, I do not feel a single morsel of gratitude for the freedom that I have. For if I were only six or more years younger, I would be right in their shoes. Might I make it clear what your students ask of you? Respect how they feel and how they want to identify. Call them what they ask to be called, and let them be in the spaces that they belong in. That's it. Such a simple request. Something that they should have the full freedom to do, but you, board members, the ones who are supposed to protect the freedom of these kids, have failed them, all because you fear what you can't understand. And I'm aware many in opposition believe our existence to be some kind of ideology. This narrative is nothing new. You know, when I first discovered I was trans at the age of sixteen, the first thing I did was deny it. My comfortability with my masculinity and my attraction to women only contributed to my denial as well. A mantra stayed glued to the back of my mind for years and years. That it's just a phase. When I turned eighteen and graduated from my school, it's just a phase. When I got my first full-time job at nineteen, it's just a phase. After I celebrated my twenty-first birthday by going out drinking, having reached one of the quintessential milestones and becoming an adult, it's just a phase. And after five entire years with this, I forced myself to think, if I had spent the past half of a decade in misery asking myself that same question nearly every single moment of every single day, is this really a phase? So upon nearing my twenty-second birthday, I made a leap of faith, and I came out to my family, which finally gave me the comfort to tell myself that it's not a phase. And when you tell these kids that it's just a phase, that they don't know themselves, that they must not be treated as equal to other kids, as a result, you subject them to the torture I subjected myself to. One thing that I am grateful for is that these kids have each other. As after my dear high school friends left the way for college, I was alone in my fight to become myself, and I never, ever want anybody else to have to go through that. So from here on out, until these policies are somehow erased and my own siblings are free,
Thirty seconds.
you will see my face and you will hear my words at every single one of these meetings. At the expense of self-indulgence as well, if you, board members, wonder what you get when you remove these policies, you get people who are free and full of compassion, love, and life. I am living proof.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cody Connor, Darrell Clark, and Richard Pickens.
Here I am, still. You moved forward with these policies. I said that I would be here until the policies that endangered our LGBTQ students were gone. That's called integrity, for those of you that are unfamiliar. Means you are who you say you are, and you do what you say you're gonna do. While I'm up here, I might as well hit on hypocrisy. A great example of that is when a school football coach can prey on the school football field at a school football game with school students. But that social studies teacher better take the rainbow down out of her classroom because that's a display of personal beliefs. Or another good example of hypocrisy is you guys claiming to be students first. I agree with Ms. Anderson. You should take that down. Put something more honest up, like co-parenting since 2023, or if you don't let it show, we won't let them know. Or maybe Virginia Beach Schools, a subsidiary of Redeemer Presbyterian Church. According to the last GLSEN school climate survey, over eighty percent of LGBTQ students reported feeling unsafe at school. Over seventy-five percent reported being verbally harassed at school. Over thirty-one percent reported being physically harassed at school. And over fifty percent reported being sexually assaulted at school. So don't you dare tell me you care about these kids and you're students first when you had an opportunity to do something about that and didn't. When you had parents of LGBTQ students like me, when you had students here for over a year sharing information, their experiences, begging you to keep them safe, and you chose not to, you should be ashamed. I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed that we've been represented with such bigotry and cowardice. But the time for reasoning is done. Now's the time for accountability and consequences. Consequences in courts, consequences in the voting booth, and unfortunately, consequences for our LGBTQ students. Discrimination trauma can increase suicidality by over three times. Trans youth attempt to unalive themselves at over seven and a half times the rate of their peers. You made a conscious, informed decision to be a part of that, and that's on you.
Thirty seconds.
No matter what consequences come after, that blood is now on you.
Our next speaker is Darrell Clark, Richard Pickens, and Natalie Gonzalez.
My name's Darrell Clark, and y'all are a pathetic bunch. Apathetic as well. Y'all voted for these policies. These kids have been saying they don't want to be game pieces in y'all's politics. They've said they are not pawns. They're just trying to live their lives, and y'all pass them as some sort of strategy, some strategic move to move it to, what, a higher court? What's it gonna take, like five years or something like that? Like, how disrespectful and despicable that is for y'all to go about that? Y'all could have just voted no. Y'all could have just said no. But y'all clearly have shown y'all only care about holding y'all's seats, and that is pathetic. Y'all decided to empower the wrong voices here. Y'all claim to love these kids. Y'all claim to care about them so much, but y'all gave victory to grown adults who've been coming in here and antagonizing these kids, belittling them, insulting their intelligence, degrading them, reducing them down to abominations and contagions, and saying that they didn't read the policies when you can go on YouTube and watch them quote, like, five-point, da-da-da-da. Like, it's there. So for y'all- So for y'all to, for y'all to give power and victory to the ones who have been talking down on the youth for over a year says so much about y'all's character. And most of y'all ain't even from historically marginalized groups, so y'all don't even know what it's like to experience being discriminated against. The, like, what that does to someone internally, what it does to the nervous system, what goes on inside thoughts, emotions, everything, to someone who's being discriminated against, no matter what severity. And, um, yeah, it shows, because y'all passed a clearly, clearly discriminative policy or a regulation or however y'all want to word it. Regardless, it's pathetic. Y'all sold these kids out, and y'all know it. Y'all know it was wrong. You even asked if y'all were being violation of the Human Rights Act. It's, I wish I could use much more colorful language up here. It's, because y'all deserve it.
Our next speaker is Richard Pickens, Natalie Gonzalez, and Noah Moreland.
Our first speaker at the last meeting started the evening with a reference to Kellum High School, saying she held the hand of a fifteen-year-old who was sobbing and mentioned that teachers at Kellum High School were guarding other students. Then Kim DeWitt, a woman, got up and said, "People like myself are religious zealots who think they are the only ones with the correct answers," and that is partially true. Then she told us, "Teachers at Kellum High School now have to stand outside of the fine arts hallway to protect these students. And thank God for these teachers. I know them, and they're amazing people." And I've heard a lot of things like that, so I like to check on things. So I called Kellum High School today, and I spoke with the assistant principal from Kellum High School. I told her who I was, even used my title as pastor. I hid nothing from her, told her where I'd heard at what, school board meeting. And she assured me with the strongest possible way that this is not happening and has not happened, and she did not know where that information come from. So I really had great confidence. She was letting me know, this is not true, this is not correct. Another speaker, who spoke just recently, just a few moments before, referred to people with opposite viewpoints as minority voices of paranoid bigots. And this is the kind of wording that kind of strikes me as kind of funny, not funny, but we're being told about bullying, there's even a sign, no bullying zone, when you come into the doors at the school, and yet we're trying to be respectful and kind with their words. Well, yes, we have a difference of opinion, we have a different viewpoint, mine comes from the word of God, I acknowledge that. And, uh, but you're not gonna hear me calling people names, and yet this other side feels very capable of calling that, and I'm like, how kind and how non-bullying is that? Now, I can handle it, it's not a big deal, but I just want to reference that. Then, uh, the speaker Rachel Joyner ended with a reference to John eight seven, "He who is without sin, let them cast the first stone," and that was an accurate quote, uh, but you left off the ending. You didn't tell, he did, Jesus did not tell the one she was innocent, instead he just said, neither do I condemn you, but he said something which is very important. He said, "But go and sin no more." So it wasn't saying that she was not guilty, she was just saying, he said, "I'm not gonna condemn you, but yes, that was sinful, and please don't do that anymore, it'll be, your life will go better." And so we aren't here to condemn, but we are here in part to tell you that your life is redeemable, but it does need to be redeemed. We don't want a body of adults in the school system applauding, encouraging, or facilitating immoral behavior.
Thirty seconds.
We don't want counselors with shifting moral values, instilling and reinforcing ideals that are immoral. And I assure you, we will do our best not to bully or insult or dismiss you, and you're a person, and therefore you have value. Darrell Clark wore a t-shirt that said, "Banish the fascist last time." He likes to wear t-shirts, okay? I do not understand all the symbolism of his knife, bird claws, and toadstools, but his rhetoric is Christian diversion therapy to prey the gay way. He has a hateful attitude towards Christians.
And that is time.
All right, take care.
Our next speaker is Natalie Gonzalez, Noah Moreland, and Icarus Landacker.
Good evening. I wanted to open this speech by discussing my own religious background. My family is Catholic, and while we don't always go to church, we hold gatherings and prayers when our loved ones pass away, in hopes that Jesus will bless them with forgiveness and safe passage to heaven. This is my twenty-first meeting, and you might be wondering why it took me so long to mention this facet of my identity, and the honest answer is that it's just not relevant. The fact of the matter is, my religion has no place in this discussion. My peers and I have gone out of our way not to rebut religious arguments in our speeches because it's not something that should even be considered when it comes to discussing how all students are treated. Christianity is not the only religion out there. Various Native American tribes and ancient Hindu beliefs consider transgender people sacred and believe them to have a deeper connection to nature and the gods they pray to. There are even different denominations of Christianity, like Anglicanism, Eastern Orthodoxy, and Catholicism, that all share core traits yet differ immensely. Our founding fathers were deeply religious, and yet they still saw the value in the separation of church and state. In fact, these vehemently Christian men were the ones who put it in our constitution through the Establishment Clause in the first place. Why are we allowing religion and Christianity to so heavily paint the discourse surrounding this issue when it truly has nothing to do with how a secular public school should treat our transgender students? When it has nothing to do with the way clear and defined, with the very clear and defined fact, these policies will be detrimental to students. Policy five dash thirty-one, that effectively states that a student can't even be considered trans unless their parent says so, policy five dash seven dot one, that requires teachers to refer to students by their biological sex and birth name even if that's not what the student wants, these are the policies that will kill students. That is not a threat or an exaggeration, that is a fact that is supported by almost every organization that studied the effect of deadnaming and misgendering on transgender youth. Studies by the University of Texas, the Journal of Adolescent Health, the American Psychological Association, the University of Guelph in Canada, all establish a correlation between the deadnaming and misgendering of transgender people and an increase in suicide. While I was researching for this speech, almost every academic organization I stumbled across that studied this was in concurrence, and the only dissenting opinion I could find was that of a freelance journalist. So forgive me if I find the statements of peer-reviewed scholarly articles more libel than those of people who don't know that the DSM V defines it as gender dysphoria, not dysmorphia. For a while, I really thought we had a chance. I thought that maybe our words were getting through to this board, and maybe we would be able to change the minds of a few of you. I especially had high hopes for Ms. Franklin, who for so long really seemed like she was listening. For so long, I thought of this board as one full of members unafraid to vote for what they truly believed in, even if their party didn't agree. But now it seems less as though you vote for what you believe in, and instead you vote for what will keep you in your seat. I think that's something my opposition and I unfortunately can both agree on. I hope reelection is worth it.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Noah Moreland, Icarus Landacker, and Jim Davis.
First, I'd like to start out by thanking members of the board for hearing everyone that's come to speak in these past several months. And despite some hiccups here and there, and what we see on this side of the podium, I know everyone's working hard for the city. There's room for improvement, to be sure, but you've done a good thing passing the update on model policies. When these students tell you that they have or might attempt suicide and then point the finger at you as if it is your fault, know that it comes with the territory of being a public servant. It is an attempt at emotional manipulation, and you are not to blame for it. Second, a remark to those that seem to think all parents are child abusers for having wanted this policy passed. While it is true terrible people exist, and by extension terrible parents must also exist, it does not track that all families that insist on privacy in their home, as well as control over what their child sees outside of it, should be treated as suspicious. I acknowledge that a minority of parents do awful things to their children, but I will not tolerate our government treating current and future parents as abusers when they are not, and there is no evidence to suggest this. But an oft- unmentioned side of this story is that the abuse cuts both ways. Yes, some parents are abusive, but many teachers are abusive, not just some, actually, many. The Department of Education's own study on this topic found that one in ten public school students are targets of sexual misconduct by school staff. One in ten. That works out to millions of victims at school. Speakers comment on how school is a safeguard against abuse, but conveniently forget to mention that for millions of children, school is the place of the abuse where it occurs. A recent report in the Scientific American said that two-thirds of the children in this country can't read fluently. Another report by the NAEP said that one-third of eighth graders aren't proficient in reading, and a one poll that released this summer showed that forty percent of adults don't even know why we celebrate July Fourth. It's the world public schooling has created. The system is failing in its basic function to educate the next generation. The parents that speak up about these issues are Nazi child abusers, but the teachers that spend eight hours a day with their kids and can't even teach them what day the Declaration of Independence was signed deserve utmost respect for the work they do, and how dare we expect more of them? In my time there in the public school system, I knew some excellent teachers, and I also knew some who had no place being teachers. The difference being, I do not crucify all teachers because there are some that are bad. Fifty-six men signed a declaration two hundred forty-seven years ago. Fifty-six men, ranging from lawyers to planters and shippers, changed the course of millions of lies, so surely eleven men and women that control hundreds of millions of dollars can change the course of a few thousand. I look forward into the years to come. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Icarus Landacker, Jim Davis, and Carlos Taylor.
I would like to start with a short history lesson. Berlin, Germany, nineteen twenty through nineteen thirty-two. For those who do not know, which I presume is most because this history is not taught, this was a city in a time where queerness was alive and celebrated. Some of the first gender-realigning surgeries took place here, and an advocate by the name Magnus Hirschfield created legal license for trans people to walk the streets as themselves and not be beat by the police. I am sure you all know what happens next, though. Nineteen thirty-three, the Nazis come to power, and that period was burned to the ground, lost to time, and is yet to resurface anywhere since. A history erased, just as it is being erased today. We have not been taught our history, nor how it was buried by those with privilege and power, but it seems like we do not need to as we are living it today. I want you all to look me in the eyes for the remainder of this speech. I want you to look me in the eyes and not look away, because I want you to see all of the rage boiling in me. Rage, despair, terror, hopelessness, emotions that don't even have names. This is what went through my mind when I spoke, when I woke up to the news that the Model 2023 policies had passed. The first person I thought of when I heard this news was my best friend, who identifies as non-binary, a sophomore still in the system. The second person who came to my mind were my siblings and their friends. Then came the horror of the thought that one day I may have to attend their funeral because they could not live in a world that would accept them. We played by the rules. We were polite, we were calm, we showed respect even when it was not reciprocated. We were bombarded with hate and anger, but we were not allowed to be angry for fear it would be used against us, but it seems we have nothing more to lose. So if anger is all we have, then it is all we will give. We students came to you with the complaints of policies, and only then did parents follow, insisting we were a problem infringing on their rights. We were the problem given hundreds of names, from contagion and Nazis to slurs I cannot even utter. We became a problem as we tried to point out a life-threatening issue, yet the parents complaining did not become a problem. Where does this blatant prejudice lie? Simple, it comes from privilege. Marginalized groups have their issues overshadowed by those with more power and privilege, and that is what happens here. You scream about parental rights, but you know nothing of rights merely privilege. Privilege to feel comfortable in your own bodies, privilege that you do not have groups screaming for your death in the streets. You show privilege and apathy towards a dying group, and if my friends die, it will be on your hands, and I hope it stains your hearts as much as it tears mine apart. And to those who did not look me in my eye, is that simply a privilege I do not deserve.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Jim Davis, Carlos Taylor, and Sophia Abatz.
Thank you, board, and I do thank your attendance and appreciate you listening to us. I know my granddaughter, grandson Orion appreciates that. However, I know she's disappointed, or he's been disappointed. I do make that mistake because this is new to me. I'm the grandfather of Orion Davis, who is transgender. I found this out after Orion was bullied in a school bathroom, when, a boys' bathroom. My son and daughter called me in their kitchen after that happened, and they said they had some news, and I was trying to figure out, okay, what happened? And they told me that it was about Orion. And my first question was, is he okay, or she okay? And they said, no, first of all, it's not she, it's he, and his name is Orion. My only concern, they were very apprehensive because I am a Christian, and I'm also a Republican, but I have a friend that's gay. And when I have questions about different things, I go alongside her, and she tells me. Thank goodness for people like that. Rather than coming to a conclusion or a predisposition to not like something, then I have that person that I can rely on to help me out. As these transgender people, they don't like to be outed out. My friend MJ tells me that this was not a choice for her. This was something that she always knew about, but she came out later in life. It's my opinion that Virginia's Attorney General's stance on Virginia's policy regarding transgender rights is in violation of both state and federal law. I'm going to read a partial article that was probably read before by Rachel Weiner, published in the Washington Post in September twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two. A director from the administration of Virginia, Glenn Yonkin, for public schools to restrict the rights of transgender students is either unenforceable or will be struck down in court because it appears to be both state and federal law
Thirty seconds.
and advocate struck down in court. That law says, "Safeguard all individuals within the Commonwealth from unlawful demonstration because of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, age, marital stature, sex orientation, gender identity, military status, or disability in places of public accommodation."
And that is time. Our next speaker is Carlos Taylor, Sophia Abatz, and Valeria Davis.
I filled out the survey regarding the new superintendent, and here's what I said in the comment section. It would be preferable if the superintendent was saved by the blood of Jesus Christ, the King of all kings, and was filled with the Holy Spirit of God. The superintendent should be able to define what a boy is and what a girl is, and understand that boys can't transform themselves into girls, and girls can't transform themselves into boys. The superintendent should know that there is no such thing as a transgendered person/human being, because that is impossible. If the individual seeking this position does not understand these basic facts, then they are just another, they are just another disaster area waiting to go somewhere and happen. How can an individual lead a school district filled with boys and girls if they don't even know what a boy or a girl is? It would be like hiring an auto mechanic and then asking him or her to go work on the car in bay number one, to which they respond by saying, what is a car? Say it with me, disaster area. The superintendent should know that they work for the parents and not the other way around. The superintendent should have some common sense. That's all. Just some good old common sense will go a long way.
Our next, our next speaker is Sophia Abatz, Valeria Davis, and Emily Labar.
Dear members of the school board, my name is Sophia Abatz, and I'm here today to address an important matter to our community and the safety of our children. I represent eleven concerned families within our neighborhood. We, as a community, are experiencing rapid growth, which has led to an increase in the number of students coming to Salem Middle School. While our community thrives, we have noticed that a group of eleven students or more, particularly those residing in the Glenwood Indian Point area, face a daily challenge as they walk long distances to reach the nearest school bus stop. This situation has raised concerns among parents and residents, and these children are exposed to numerous safety hazards, including traffic risks. It is our collective responsibility to ensure our children have It is our collective responsibility to ensure our children have safe and convenient access to school transportation. We have some, we have come together to request an addition of a new school bus stop in our neighborhood, specifically in the Drumheller Drive and Dakota Court intersection, which is a central location for most all of them. Please consider the following reasons behind our requests. First and foremost, our paramount concern is safety of our children. The current situation forces our children to walk long distances along busy streets, exposing them to potential risks or accidents. The lack of proper parking, enforcement, and speeding, combined with the challenges that first responders face in navigating our neighborhood, contribute to that concern as well. Vehicles parked directly on the sidewalks, and this leads to situations where numerous cars continuously back out and hit a child. For instance, yesterday, a truck almost hit a boy who was crossing the street. He was in the middle of the street, and he did not stop, and then almost hit a group of other children, but they passed. So we actually have a video of that, and we can share with the board. This, it's getting darker. A new bus stop in our neighborhood would also reduce travel time for students, allowing them to reach school without undue delays. It is, not only contributes to their safety, but also enhances their learning experience. Furthermore, we believe that a new bus stop will foster a stronger sense of community by bringing together parents, students, and neighbors. This sense of community can lead to increased vigilance and support for our children's safety, which is a shared responsibility.
Thirty seconds.
Lastly, by facilitating a school bus stop within the community, we can help reduce the number of cars on the road during school drop-off, pickup times. And we, we are hopeful that the school board will prioritize the children's safety and take action to ensure their well-being. Our children are the future, and their safety is paramount. Thank you so much for your attention on this matter.
Our next, our next speaker is Valeria Davis, Emily Labar, and then Blair Gakowski.
Good evening. My name is Valeria Davis. I'm just gonna start by briefly addressing something that was said. Orion, you're transgender. You exist, and I love you. Decisions have been made. Policies will be enacted. I've listened to well-meaning adults stand and quote Christian scripture to justify their positions on Youngkin's policy. I'm sure they believe with their mind, body, and soul that they are out here doing the Lord's work, and I will not try to convince them otherwise. Despite many of, many speeches from this constituency in which they talked about how saying anything against the LGBT community would malign them and how their way of life was under threat by the woke liberals of the world, how do you explain the vote from two weeks ago? I think perhaps they got it backwards as to who and whom has sway and power in this world. So why am I here again? I want to address the lingering Christian biblical fear-mongering, manipulative, pedantic rhetoric that I believe led the board to vote for Youngkin's policy. To paraphrase a Baptist preacher named Mark Wingfield, I think we all can agree that a sin is something we do that we shouldn't do, something we have a choice about. A sin is not transgender identity. Emphatically and conclusively, this is not a choice. It is a person, it is who a person is. It is their soul, end quote. A sin is making a policy that violates a person's rights, knowing it puts people in jeopardy. That is a choice. That was a choice. I'm sorry that some cannot see that these children know who they are, just as all of you know who you are to your very core. I don't doubt you or your story or your faith or your beliefs. I just don't understand why you think your story is the only one to tell. To quote one of my favorite lines from the Bible, because, yes, I am familiar with the Bible, let us lay aside every weight and sin which clings so closely and let us run with endurance the race that is set before us. You see, part of the race I am able and grateful to run is that of being a parent to two fearfully and wonderfully made children. That's Bible quote two, if anyone's counting. Their design was not a mistake, a flaw, or a mental illness. Their design put them on this earth exactly as they were made to be, one transgender and one not. Both know who they are and know they are loved. Furthermore, I'm flabbergasted that an adult has to whine about students getting speaker preference at a school board meeting when this is the only venue these students have because they are not of voting age to speak. Additionally to the board, the Youngkin policy is discriminatory, and it violates the Virginia Human Rights Act Code two point two dash thirty-nine hundred, and I anticipate a lawsuit would be forthcoming. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Emily Labar, and then Blair Gakowski.
I drove four hours down here to speak, and after this meeting, I'll have to drive four hours back. A waste of time and a waste of gas because I know it's fallen on deaf ears, like they have for over a year. The question to ask isn't why I still care. It's why don't you? There's a choice we're all faced with far more often than we'd prefer. The choice between doing what is convenient and doing what is right. It's much easier to grind the hopes of your students under your heel than it is to build them up. It's easier to ignore an inconvenient portion of your student body than it is to support or understand them. It's easier for me to turn a blind eye to injustice than it is to come speak here. But I am here because this choice between what is right and what is convenient should never have been a difficult one. You know the harm your vote will cause. And if you don't, then you clearly haven't been paying attention for the past twenty-five meetings. So what are you going to do about it? What are you going to do to mitigate the harms you have caused? You don't get to move on from this as if nothing ever happened. You don't get to wash the blood off your hands in the bathroom, then give awards to your transgender students the next. Transgender students aren't some esoteric part of the student body. They're the same people you give awards to at the start of this meeting, the same people you watch graduate, the same people who come to these meetings, and the same people who can't. Your vote does not exist in a void. The harms you caused exist regardless of whether someone's brave enough to come to this podium and tell you about it. So do something about it. Do something to protect your students from your policies. If you're going to claim you care about your students, don't ignore the ones that have been here longer than some of you have held this office. If you're going to claim you're against discrimination, stop implementing discriminatory policies. You were given the choice between what was right and what was convenient, and you chose wrong. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Blair Gakowski. Blair Gakowski. Madam Chair, we're going to move on to our online speakers. Vick Nichols, please unmute.
Thank you. On one dash forty-seven, the only way we should have a speaker time limit go down to two minutes is that board members are limited to five minutes on issues because that will truly take care of a lot of excess time. On four dash sixty-two, there should not be any kind of cultural competency or CRT required of anyone for a position. Those issues have been settled at the state level. Thank you for going ahead and finally, after months, making a decision on the transgender issue. Gavin Grim has settled law in Virginia. I want to tell you about several things that have happened. They've had a trans woman who was arrested threatening to murder children in Illinois. They had a pedophile named Andrew George Miller, who is a trans woman who abducted and abused a girl for twenty-seven hours. A trans woman called for the murder of women critical of gender ideology at a San Francisco performance. These are the types of things that are going on. And while people may want to blame religion, this right here is a huge issue. It is not the responsibility of any female or any female athlete in any sport or contest, anywhere, to affirm or accommodate the feelings or desires of males who insist on using them to validate their identity at the cost to females. And not just responsibility, women have rights to. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Catherine Mally. Please unmute.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Robertson. My name is Catherine Mally. I am a retired teacher and current member of the VBEA Board. Earlier tonight, Kathleen Slindy, president of the Virginia Beach Education Association, presented an overview of problems with student behavior plaguing our schools. What can be done to solve the problem of violence in our classrooms? Here are actual suggestions given to a VBEA member by supervisors or administration. When a special education teacher was scratched and bitten by a student, she was told to wear a jean jacket and cover your arms. She then added that a student had scratched her chest. Then she was told, wear the jean jacket backwards. This is a ridiculous and insulting suggestion implying the employee's safety is of no concern. Another educator shared that she was not allowed to write referrals for pre-K students. Is this a district policy? I know of another elementary school where a pre-K student has been suspended twice because of referrals. Speaking of referrals, one elementary site insists educators write pre-referral forms before writing a referral. Pre-referral forms must be written immediately while the student is acting out, and the form must be sent directly to the office. But the office does not take any action with these forms. It is simply data collection. Educators should not have to go through hoops to write a referral. This pre-referral form effectively blocks the referral process. Last but not least, there is a post on social media today about a bus driver who was stabbed by a parent while doing his route. Is it too much to ask that Virginia Beach school employees can be guaranteed a safe and respectful working environment? School board members, I urge you to look closely at the way discipline is being handled in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. No one is safe.
And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you. We are now at number twelve, information, interim financial statements, September twenty-two thirty. Welcome, Daniel Hopkins, our Director of Business Service.
Good evening. Sorry. Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, school board members, Dr. Robertson. As of September thirtieth, our overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. Our September thirtieth enrollment came in at sixty-three thousand one hundred thirty-two, which is just under our sixty-three thousand two hundred twenty-two original projection. VDOE released their latest calc tool on October twelfth, and here are a few of the changes. Basic aid increased five point six million. Compensation supplement decreased by two point one million. And they added twenty million of per pupil funds, which seventy percent must be spent on high-impact tutoring. Our budget staff is working with departments right now on the best uses of those funds. The federal revenues are showing an acceptable trend at this point in the fiscal year. We've received about six point five million dollars in federal impact aid. Other sources of revenue are acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. We're just about two hundred dollars over the same period last year. And the next graph shows that the sales tax are at an acceptable level. Year-to-date through September, we are approximately two point eight million dollars lower than the same time last year. Now, VDOE did expect this, so they gave us a lower budget amount this year, but we need to keep an eye on the governor's amendments to see if they amend it anymore. And the last graph shows that the expenditures and encumbrances trend continues to remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. And there was a change in the revenue sharing formula with the city. This just came in a few days ago, but the deficit I reported last month was two point five million. It is now four point two million, which is an increase in deficit of one point seven million. This change is due to the review by the city of the real estate taxes. The Budget Department will be presenting the reversion later tonight. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions.
I think we're questionless because you said that Ms. Pate was going to address all of this. Otherwise, I, I would definitely have a question, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is Policy Review Committee, PRC Recommendations. Welcome, Ms. Lanetti, our school board attorney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Camille Lanetti, the school board attorney, and on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'll be presenting the recommendations for information consideration from the Policy Review Committee of October ninth of two thousand twenty-three. There are two bylaws we'll be looking at first. The first one is Bylaw one fourteen, which deals with compensation expenses. And if you say, why? Didn't we just do this recently? Yes, you did this last, at the last meeting, you looked at your data allowance, communication allowance. But we did come back after looking at the salaries. My understanding, and you will have to have the Policy Review Committee members speak to this, the recommendation was that the school board consider raising the annual salary. The last time you looked at your salary was two thousand and seven. You receive twelve thousand dollars a year annually for a school board member. There's an additional two thousand dollars that is given to the person who's holding the chair seat during the year that they are the chair. And that, you can go up by law to the same amount your city council or board supervisors are. And in Virginia Beach, that is twenty-eight thousand dollars that they receive for the city council members. So the, PRC did want to have a discussion about that, and they were looking at it. While looking in the discussion, there's a recommendation in Section A under compensation. But if you look down, they also wanted to put a recommendation under Section B that if you were to implement the recommendation for the increasing compensation, that you would then remove the data and communication allowances that you've had for the last couple of years. So it is a two-part recommendation. So at this time, the recommendation that floor, and this is open for discussion, that what the PRC members felt that throughout a number that you could all discuss and have some conversation concerning what you thought was an appropriate amount. But the recommendation is effective January first, twenty twenty-five, that the annual salary for school board members will be twenty thousand dollars, and the annual salary for school board chair will be twenty-two thousand dollars. Also then effective on January first, twenty twenty-five, school board members no longer receive the communication allowance and the data allowances which are set forth there. So at this time, we're opening this up, understanding that there might be some conversation that needs to take place.
Ms. Manning?
So I'm not opposed to a salary increase. It's been a long time, but this is just too big of a jump for me. I, I just think that that's way too much all at once. You know, I, in my mind, my max that I was willing to go was seventeen and nineteen, and that was still on the high end for me. And to go this high, I just can't. So I would be a no as the way it's written right now.
Mr. Callen?
I looked into the matter and was able to determine that the top five school districts in the state, I guess it's the Commonwealth, are Fairfax, Prince William County, Loudon, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and Chesterfield. And Fairfax and Prince William are somewhat outliers, if you will. If we look at the number of students as an example. Fairfax, according to the data that I found, has approximately a hundred and seventy-eight thousand students and some change, putting them in a league by themselves, if you will. They're followed by Prince William, who has ninety thousand and seventy students. Not as significantly large as Fairfax is, but also somewhat in a group by themselves. Loudon County is number three with eighty-one thousand students. Virginia Beach is number four with six- Virginia Beach is number four with 65,000, according to this information, and Chesterfield at 62,445. So from a what's proportional, what's relative, I took the average between Loudoun County at 81,000 and Chesterfield County at 62,000, and then saw what they were paying their School Board people. Loudoun pays 20,000. Chesterfield pays 17,549. This is an overabundance of numbers for a guy like me. But nonetheless, what I ended up discovering was the average between Loudoun and Chesterfield, which is above us and below us in student population, is 18,775 as it relates to compensation to Board members. I think that what's reasonable based on those numbers is 19,000 for us. And that's the rationale that I bring to the recommendation, because it's based on proportionality with regions, divisions, and the numbers of students that are represented therein. So that's my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you for doing that research. I agree with you that, you know, we even talked about 19,000 being the appropriate number. If you have to wait more than 10 years again before you even address this, by that time, my suggestion was to go to 20,000, just to make it an even 20 instead of 19, and then 22 for the chair. I'm unapologetic for this because I know how hard we work on this board. We don't just have one meeting or two meetings a month, like some people think we do. It's not just our formal meetings, and you're well aware of that also. Some of us attend other events that are not part of committees. I take this job very seriously and feel that, you know, I've done it now for 11 years. And, you know, I plan my vacations around these meetings. I try not to miss on purpose for any reason. I happen to be here tonight sitting on a hot pad because I pulled a muscle in the back of my leg, and that's the only way I can sit for this long. But I didn't stay home and not attend. People who want to do public service like this, if you choose to do that, you need to be dedicated to it because it's a thankless job. And many of, I've said to many of my friends that I have developed very, very thick skin by being in this job. A lot of people don't really understand why I'm so passionate about being on the School Board. And I have been very passionate about it for many years. But that's because I first viewed myself as an educator. I taught school for 36 years, and now I'm doing my part to give back to what I hope is to the students and the teachers of our city. And I try to stand up for that. But I do believe that, Mr. Callen, you did a good job in doing your research. And in our meeting, when we had the PRC meeting, one of our other members also suggested 19,000. That was her suggestion. I just said, "I think we just go for an even 20 and 22." But I'm not opposed to the 19, but I do believe that this board deserves to enact a raise. And it won't affect me because I'm probably not going to be running anyway, so I'm making that public. But, you know, so it won't affect me because the way it's written in our state constitution is that the salary has to be voted on in December of this year, and next year is an election year, so it wouldn't go into effect until 2025, January 2025. So it won't affect me, but I won't vote against it, no matter what. I do believe that we need to up the salary on this because most of the members on this board work very hard and are very dedicated to this. So I believe everybody deserves it.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay, so I have to say that I'm deeply conflicted about this particular change to the bylaw. One, because I really have personal angst with government officials voting for their own salary increases, to be honest. And two, because I never even knew that I was going to be paid for this position when I initially ran for office. I did find that out, you know, shortly thereafter, but I also didn't know the amount of work either that this position held. I probably, just because my personal conscience really, it drives me nuts that officials vote for their own pay increases, but I probably am going to abstain. And, but I'm also not going to hold people back from doing what they feel is necessary. I do believe that there is a lot of good work that's done by this board. I just, I don't know for right now, that that would be my initial thought on it, but I just, I do not agree with the 20,000 though, either way. But, but again, I understand where people are coming from, and I do think that we do a lot of good work on this board. And, you know, I'd be interested in hearing the rest of their responses. Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I want to start off by also thanking Mr. Callen for his research and perspective there. I think 19,000 comes very close to the number initially proposed with the 20,000. I do feel that 20,000 is an appropriate number. Some of the things that I weigh when I'm looking at this is where we look at the last time this board did their salary increase, what the cost of living was at that point relative to the salary, and where the cost of living and inflation has gone from that time when it was determined that that was an appropriate salary. I use our counterparts at City Council as a gauge as well. They have ensured that their salaries were moving accordingly with the inflation and cost of living in this city. One of the biggest reasons that I am a proponent for raising the salary is because I feel like we need to open up participation in our board to a wider community demographic. Historically, has been a position that people can only participate in at a board level if you are retired with an income coming in or you are in a dual-income household. It is exclusionary for people with lower income, single parents, or for younger families. And those are a big part of the demographics that we are making decisions for. I would like for them to have a seat at the table, and if creating a salary that is commensurate with the amount of time that they will have to commit and commensurate to our region where we live is how we do that, then I think that that's an important step to take. Right now, what we are hearing from a number of people is we're in a $1,000 range, 19,000 to 20,000 here. I heard Ms. Manning say that she was closer to the 17 and 19 mark. We're a small place away. When we're considering the regional proportionality, I think it's also important that we are looking at the time commitment, which I know was mentioned, but the amount of committees that Virginia Beach has compared to other districts. We're currently seeing emails go back and forth because we don't have coverage for the discipline committees that we have. And that's not even talking about other coverage of other committees that currently have holes and vacancies that we're trying to make happen. So I support the 20,000 range. I don't know when the next time this will be looked at, but I would like it to be open to a broader community demographic than what historically our School Board has had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown?
Thank you. So I'm going to be honest, when this was very first mentioned to me by another Board member, my initial reaction is, "No, absolutely not." I don't like the idea of there being a vote for an increase by this board when there's people in the community struggling. And the reason that person mentioned to me, "Well, don't you want those people to have the opportunity to be able to serve?" And the truth is, I do. When I was out campaigning, a lot of people said that they want people skin in the game on this board, people with their families in the school system. And one of the ways that that can happen is by opening that up. I had initially suggested $18,000 as a reasonable number. I still actually, I believe that is the most reasonable number. And the reason is, is back in 2007, when this board voted on the $12,000 pay, the value of that dollar today, in today's dollar, is $17,813.41. So that's just keeping up with the inflationary aspect of the dollar. And so that was how I arrived at that number. I still prefer $18,000. I'm willing to support 19. I will not support 20. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper?
I was kind of going to say almost the same thing. If you look at inflation, 12,000 from 2007 to current puts you in the ballpark of $18,000. Add on top of that elimination of $2,400 in allowances, and 20 is not unreasonable.
Ms. Williams?
I find this conversation interesting because so many of my friends tell me over and over again, "There's not enough money in the world that I could get paid to be on that School Board." So, I mean, do we go to millions? Would that be enough? No, seriously, I've been on here for a while, and I didn't know we got paid when I ran either, Ms. Franklin. So, you know, it helps a little, but the work is, there's a lot of work. And I think with the thick skin, like Ms. Anderson says, yeah, you get abused up here. We do. I mean, I'll just be blunt about it because we're not making everybody happy. But I will definitely support a raise. I did what Mr. Callen did and thought between 18 and 21 compared was about my range. So it doesn't matter between 19 or 20. I think it's all fair. So I'll definitely support it. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you add Ms. Owens back in the queue?
Ms. Owens?
Sorry, I was stuck on mute there. I just had to come back and make the quick comment that as we are looking at the inflation number and saying 17 to 18 sounds like the correct number based on inflation from 2007, I just want to make sure that we are considering that in 2007, this board had at least seven less committees. The average meeting was three hours long, and the cost of childcare has not gone up proportionally to inflation. It has gone through the roof. And so when we are considering those factors and saying that we're doing this to open the door, I just want us to be looking at it realistically from the point of view of the community. The fact that many of us, or many people who are on the board are saying that they didn't know that they were going to get paid, appreciate whatever that standard is, that means that we didn't do the research before coming into this position. And those community members who are going to do the research to make sure that it fits in their life need to be able to look at what it really entails. And so I don't want the standard to be, "Because we didn't do research," that other people won't. So I just want us to consider those factors of what the board looked like in 2007, so we're not just saying the inflation dollar, but we're also factoring in the responsibility and what it now entails. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Manning?
Just real quick, the committee issue has come up a couple of times, and I want to say, when I joined this board, we had far fewer committees. The committees have been self-imposed, and I would like to get rid of some of our committees. I truly believe that. I actually would support, you know, maybe going a little bit higher if there was some agreement to maybe get rid of a couple of our committees that we didn't have, nor did we need when I came on the board. So that's just my two cents on committees.
Okay. I wasn't going to speak about this, but I am because it really isn't going to affect me, but I think it's very important. I will say again, we might have added these committees, or self-imposed, as you just said. But these committees that you guys are talking about, I'm sure it's Governance and PPM.
PRC.
PRC. They were all committees that were needed. And they're what, we didn't add them so we'd have a job to do. Believe me, we have plenty to do. But these have specific purposes. I think they've been good. I could ask people that have served on every one of those committees to give me their feelings about these committees to see if it's helped them do their job as a Board member. And to make it more efficient, because some of those jobs would be falling on one person if we did not have them. So we still have the work to do in a school division that does the work that we do. So I don't think those committee, adding those couple of committees have made it harder. We still have, we still have discipline. There's still many things that we, there are still activities that we need to attend. There is a lot to do as a School Board member if you're going to support the community and support your constituents that you ran for. So I think it's very important for us to look at this. None of us ran to make $12,000 or $20,000. None of us did. We ran because we believed in the purpose of it, and the purpose of our students, and what we want to give to this community. So, but it is something that we need to look at because we still do have to pay for our gas. We have to pay for our time that we spend, and I think it's only fair to look at that. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
And I just want to kind of just make a comment about what was said. You know, the reason that I didn't look at the pay for this position is not because I wasn't trying to do my research on it. That's just not the reason that I decided to run. That was not important to me. I, you know, quite frankly, sometimes I think I'd rather not get paid so that people would not continually tell me, "I pay your salary." You know, so, because there is no way that I am doing this for the pay. And so honestly, and the only thing that I would also comment on is I have been a single mom. I was a single mom for eight years. And I feel like I definitely look, from that role that I had as a single mom, I don't know why I'm getting upset, sorry, but, sorry. I don't know why I'm getting emotional, but all I can say is that when you make decisions from this dais, it is not about the pay. It is about your concern and care for this division, for your love of this division. And I think that you have to be very thoughtful when you decide to run for this seat. Even though I did not know about the pay, I can tell you that there is so much work that is done here, good work that is done. And I think that people need to understand that when we're up here, it is not about the pay. It is not about what we're trying to do for the kids, do not do for the kids. It is because we genuinely love this division, and we want to do the best for this division. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you spoke for all of us. I appreciate that. Okay, so.
I got skipped over.
Ms. Melnick?
Never mind.
I thought you said you were going to do it. Go ahead.
All right, we'll move this on. If there are any changes that need to be made, please let me know.
If there are any changes that need to be made, please let me know before the next meeting. Otherwise, I'll come back in that current state. All right, moving on to another non-controversial topic, Bylaw one forty-seven, public comments on there. Bylaw one forty-seven came up as a recommendation for school. Remember to look to see if we could be a little bit more efficient in our meetings. One of the areas that we were looking at in bylaws was, um, the bigger, more efficiency was, could we do something about the speakers? So the recommendation, after a lot of discussion on PRC, was to look under Section C, limitation on public comments. Looking at Section C three, public speakers signed up to speak during school board meeting may be allotted up to three minutes to address the school board. The suggestion from PRC would be to add a line that said, when more than forty-five speakers are signed up for a meeting, all speakers will be allotted two minutes to speak for that meeting. So once we know at noon when our, our cutoff is, if we would inform all the speakers, because if some, there are more than forty-five, it would go down to two minutes apiece. We wouldn't do the first, um, the first forty-five would be a different amount. It would be, everybody would get two minutes. And C four would read, the first ten speakers will currently be, will be currently involved BBCBS students if there are more than ten student speakers signed up. After the first ten student speakers, student speakers signed up to speak will be alternated with non-student speakers until there are no more currently involved BBCBS student speakers for the meeting. So that was a compromise offered by PRC involving the students, uh, student speakers. At this time, those are all the recommendations that are coming out of PRC concerning public comments. And we open the floor to have further discussions by the board at this time.
Okay, Ms. Melnick.
All right. I don't think I've ever started a sentence up here with, that sounds ridiculous, but that sounds ridiculous. Like, we have three minutes to speak. Everybody deserves their three minutes to speak. This rule changing, if we have forty-five speakers, but then there's this, and then there's that, but then if this happens and this changes it, we don't even get the speaker list until noon. The speaker list slot doesn't even stop until noon on the day of the meeting. So I just think everybody deserves their three minutes to speak. I'm not opposed to, to leaving the students where they are. We did that for a reason. I wish the public understood that. But we did have a student one time that waited until one forty-eight to speak. And we, and she announced that she was a senior and had to be up in like four hours. And so that's why it was proposed that we let the kids come in, they speak. There was nothing nefarious that happened. All of that was done on their own free will, these students that came to speak to, to us for so long. But by golly, just give people three minutes to speak with no interruptions and no special rules. Um, the end.
Ms. Anderson.
So I've taken a lot of heat over this, because I, uh, we had one speaker tonight who, you know, loves to criticize me, and that's fine. I told you my skin's pretty thick, I can take it. But I, I didn't bring this, this topic up. This topic was brought to me by another one of my colleagues, who said, we need a solution to this problem. This problem of us meeting until one and two in the morning and having to make decisions that, that late in the night is not good for us. And I agree. But because that, my, one of my colleagues asked me to bring this forward, we opened it up for discussion. This is, this is a compromise that we made. And it was my suggestion to be able to curb the fact that when we have a lot of speakers, and sometimes we have, like tonight, it was, you know, we were finished at seven twenty. So that was fine. It was only, I had like twenty, twenty or twenty-two speakers. That wasn't very many. My, my idea was thirty-five speakers, which takes us, if you, if you do the, do the math, thirty-five speakers takes us until about eight oh five or eight ten. And my, my thought was, if we have thirty, more than thirty-five speakers, then everybody goes to two minutes. And so that was a compromise that I came up with, instead of just saying, because I, one of my other colleagues suggested that we completely stop at eight o'clock, no matter what. Let everybody have three minutes that's signed up, except that when we get to eight o'clock, we just stop and we don't live here anymore. And actually, when you look at Virginia Beach's speakers policy, we're very generous compared to the rest of the state. Most school boards across the state do have a time limit, and their speak, if you get to speak, I mean, one of, one of them that was brought up tonight, they have, um, they allow five of their current students, and then they allow, um, ten from the constituents. And if you speak this month, then you don't get to speak in a, another time for two more months. We're not that strict. We're very generous with people. And my idea was, I want to hear from everybody, but in most cases, you can pretty much curb what you're going to say. If you know you've got two minutes, say what you're going to say. Get it out and get it, get it over with. You don't have to keep elaborating over it. So, um, but I just want to make it clear that I wasn't, wasn't the one who brought this up to begin with. I'm fine. I'm a night owl, if you know me personally, and you know that I, I usually stay up till one or two in the morning most nights anyway. So it doesn't bother me to make a decision at one or two in the morning. I'm still clear-headed. But I did this because some of my colleagues do not like having to make decisions that late in night. So um, just wanted to make that clear and get that off my conscience.
Okay, Ms. Martin.
So I think this is going to be an SOL question. If the school board has forty-five speakers, right? Right. So, so if I, if I look at what we've got proposed, it kind of means that twenty students will speak, and ten adult students or non-student, non-students will speak by eight PM. And I don't like that ratio so much. Um, I, I, if we alternated speakers from the start, uh, student constituent, 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 three minutes each, I might be akin to that. But um, maybe I think we defer, defer and revisit this in a few months um, and see how public engagement continues, and see how we're going, you know, how often we're going over midnight. I admit, during COVID, I was one of those people that spoke often and often practiced my speech to get it under the, the three minutes. So if we're suddenly going to tell people you only have two with just a few hours to, to, to edit that, that, that does concern me. Um, one thing I would like to share with constituents is, I like your emails. And I like when you put links in the emails and articles in the email. Because if you look at my speaker list here, I have notes of what folks are saying, research that they're referencing. I like a conversation that I can build with constituents via email. When we're here on the dais, I'm furiously writing notes, uh, maybe looking some things up. And that's not always the best engagement for someone like me who's more of, of a reader rather than a, a listener learner. So I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Culpepper.
Uh, let's see. Yeah, there, there potentially, you know, a dozen or more iterations of, of the things that are being discussed in here. So I won't try to go through that. Um, I'd actually say, it's probably easiest to say this, you know, a reasonable compromise, what my colleague just suggested, is we start off just alternating from the beginning, uh, student, uh, and general public speaker, student, general public speaker. And I think that would be a, a fairly good compromise for the, the complaints about the filibuster at the beginning of the meeting. And the only other thing is, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't support reducing the three-minute time limit either. Um, three minutes is not a lot. It's all the public gets. I think they, uh, generally speaking, utilize it very well, and they should continue to do so. Teddy's a great example, once again, you know, we're, we're done before eight, quite a bit before eight. Uh, we're done with public speaking. You know, that time, that time only becomes a problem when issues are contentious. And when issues are contentious, that's the last, that's the last thing you want to do, is to start to cut off public comment. That's when you actually need to listen more.
Ms. Franklin.
I don't know that it was in the queue, but I will, um, oh, was that Mr. Callen?
No.
Oh, okay. Um, I will just say that I basically have felt like we should just maintain the three minutes. I've maintained the three minutes all along. Um, I talked to the prior chair, um, uh, you know, Dan Edwards, and asked him about the history when I voted on, on it two years ago. And I felt like bringing it back to the three minutes that had been customary was relevant, and I still think it's relevant. And, and I just want to remind, um, the, the board prior to the change in the speaker and, uh, student speakers and the new board members, I, I just want you to think about, um, you know, this, I don't know where this, um, parent versus student, um, situation evolved. Um, I feel like it has evolved, because we have so many student speakers that have been coming. But like, um, Ms. Melnick said, the reason that we initially looked at this was because of the fact that we had a student speaker at one forty-eight in the morning. Now, all of us on this dais are parents. And I can tell you that for me personally, I would do whatever it took to ensure that my child was able to focus on what they need to do that night. Um, and I would hope that another person sitting on this dais would also be considerate of that, and my child, um, being able to accomplish that. So many of the people that we have as adults make their choice to come here. Some are retired, um, and I'm not saying that it matters, but I'm just saying that most of us, as parents, put our children's first, put our children first. I can tell you, again, just speaking as a single mom, there are many times I did not consider my needs. I considered my child's needs. And I think when it comes to education, that is our business, is education. These are students that have to get up in the morning. We need to keep them. And I, what, you know, I don't understand why we are missing that point, but we need to keep them in a position where they can hopefully leave by eight and be able to finish their work and be able to get to bed, because so many of them have to get up early. I, I feel very strongly that we do not detract from that, because, you know, it's always the unintended consequences of our discussions and our votes. It's always that. And then depending on who's, who's in charge, or who's not in charge, or who's, you know, trying to gain control, we need to just keep in mind what our business is, and that is education. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Mr. Callen.
Well, on my school board for the first-time journey, there are lots of things that I've been learning. This serves as a perfect example of, don't flippantly come up with thoughts off the top of your head as far as how you might be introducing ideas to shorten an evening's endeavor. Be careful what you suggest, because it just may come back to bite you in the rear end. So to remove any of the mystery that may have surrounded Mrs. Anderson's commentary, I am that party who said, hey, what do we do at two or three o'clock in the morning? What are we, crazy? We're making serious decisions, and we're not at our best at that hour of the night. So how about some thoughts? Well, I'm retracting some of those thoughts, because they're either not appropriate or they weren't well-received at all by the constituency. Don't cut our time at the lectern, where we have an opportunity to share our thoughts. So I would like to withdraw my original suggestion. But I would say, here's something that I did hear, and I think it bears merit for us to consider as the board. If we're going to limit the speaker's time, let's be willing to start with ourselves. Maybe, just maybe, we're the ones who are causing the evening meeting to drag well into the night and early morning hours. So I offer it as nothing more than a suggestion or consideration. But once again, please note that I'm withdrawing my suggestion to reduce it from three minutes to two minutes. End of discussion. Thank you very much.
Ms. Manning.
So I, I want to ditto much of what Ms. Martin and Mr. Culpepper said. Um, and I also agree with Mr. Callen. I don't think we should be conducting business while our constituents are sleeping. And I don't think we should be keeping staff here until all hours of the night. So I, I hope that we can all agree that we do need to find a way to not be here past, you know, eleven or twelve o'clock at night. Um, hopefully, we're heading in that right direction, as it appears we're going to hopefully get out of here using a little hour tonight. Oh, no. Oh, no, don't say it, knock on wood. Um, and it's almost past my bedtime right now, Ms. Anderson. I, I, I go to, I get up just a few hours after you go to bed, so. Um, but one thing that I want to point out is, I've talked to many, many parents with small children who say, I can't come and speak at your school board meetings, because I need to get home and I need to get my kids in bed. The teens, the youth, I don't mind, didn't go to bed until midnight, even though they had to get up early. But these parents who have to get their kids into bed by eight o'clock for their school the next morning, can't come and speak to us. And so I think we have to consider that very carefully, and the unintended consequences of allowing certain groups to speak before others. I don't love the idea of alternating student to adult, student to adult, but maybe I could compromise on that. I think it's extra work for a clerk, that's unnecessary. But I may, may be willing to consider that as an alternative. But I didn't support having student speakers separated out when we voted for this, and I still don't support it. I think we need to go back to whoever signs up first gets to speak. Um, and I, I don't think that we should have any special rules given, um, to any group. Um, so that's my input on that, and I certainly don't support reducing the time. Thanks.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Uh, so I, I want to point out that when suggestions are made about, uh, high school students coming to speak, um, being able to, to stay up late, because maybe they already do, uh, since I've been on the board, I've seen, and most of you guys have been on the board that time, students as young as third grade coming to speak at board meetings during the pandemic, when, uh, even before that, when they were, uh, championing for mandatory recess. We had young students coming to speak, and I, I want to allow for them to come to speak. I don't want third graders put till nine or ten o'clock, or whenever we come back to that, uh, business of the board. And I don't think it would be fair to further segregate and say, well, our elementary students are going to get this privilege, but these other students are not. When we've been pretty, uh, clear with the student body, particularly recently, that regardless of what level of student you are, you're going to be treated under the same rule. The other thing that doesn't, that I can't not consider is, since I've been on the board, whenever there's been a disruptive situation at the podium, something where, uh, security has had to come or escort somebody out, whenever there has been curse words used at the podium, it's been an adult speaker. Maybe the students are going to come and start cursing and being asked to leave the podium in the future. But in the time, the five years that I've been on the board, that hasn't happened. And so having the opportunity for students to leave or stay before that happens has been something that I was considering when that, uh, change first went into effect. I could take or leave the, the piece about shortening, uh, speaker timeframes if we have over forty-five. Um, but I do consider those moms with young children that Ms. Manning was talking about, that feel like they can't come to speak, uh, because they have to get their children to bed. And when we have situations come up where we have seventy speakers, eighty speakers wanting to come and share with the board, we can allow more people to have their moment with the board if the time is shorter. I'm not saying that that should be the norm. And in fact, uh, if we monitor over the next few months and see that we frequently come in under forty-five speakers when there aren't hot topics going on, then it isn't something that impacts our, uh, timing for the majority of the time. But when there is a, a hot topic, it allows for more community input to be able to fit during the timeframes without having to, to be at home and putting kids to bed, or whatever else, uh, they may have to do across the board, whatever age range they are. And so, um, I would like to continue to have at least the first fifteen students, and then perhaps alternating, if that's what, uh, we need to do. But I want to consider students of all ages, not just the students that have been here since the newer board members have started. Thank you.
Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Um, so I, um, feel pretty strongly, um, against this, and seems that that is a, a pretty strong consensus amongst this board, so. Um, but, yeah, for the public, my experience, and for my colleagues too, um, at the school board actually started over there. Um, and speaker time was four minutes, and actually, I preferred four minutes. And, um, I don't. And I don't imagine that this board is going to agree with that, but I actually would have rather given the minute back. So, there is no way to successfully reduce speaker time in a manner in which any member of the public doesn't feel like it's about them. It doesn't matter which side of the issue they stand on, they literally will think that it's because you're trying to reduce their time to come address you, whether you agree with them or disagree with them. So, I thought it was a bad idea. I do like Ms. Martin's idea to revisit. I like the idea that was presented about alternating straight from the beginning. I like the concepts, in theory, of having the students speak first, but I do think there had been some unintended consequences of that. And when this first came up, I think maybe in March, somebody made a comment, I thought, and I said, I believe I said out loud, you know, that's an unintended consequence, but I do not believe this is the right time to address it. Timing is very important. So, and I think we should wait, like she said, because I think we may be on the other side of that anyway. I mean, it's 8:09 right now, our comments are, public speakers are done, doesn't look like we have hours and hours of stuff to do here, but we will see. And then, on a final thought, I haven't had a single constituent reach out to me and say, you know what, I would really like you guys to reduce the amount of time we can talk to you. I have not had any requests for that, so I don't really see a need for it. Thank you.
Mrs. Franklin.
And I just want to say one last thing about, you know, we have, I've had three children that were, you know, brought up in this division, and I'm so proud of that. And being, I would just recommend, get involved in your PTSA's. Parents, get involved in your PTSA's. I knew every single teacher that my children had. I knew all kinds of principals, or people that I could reach out to if you have issues. I understand the importance of speaking to the board, and you can email us, and you can contact us, but we have very capable people, and I know that some people disagree with that, but we have very capable people in this division. And I would ask you to make sure that you're discussing any frustrations, you know, at the school level. And then, you know, if you can't resolve it, then obviously, just bring it up the chain of command. But outside of that, I mean, please, you know, make sure that you are trying to discuss those issues, you know, in your schools, and talk to the teachers, they're not the enemy, and make sure that you're using that. Because I can tell you, being a part of the PTSA was a valuable experience, and gave me a lot of insight and a lot of time with the teachers. And Mr. Callen, I agree with the board time, but this is the only opportunity we really have to discuss things together amongst each other, because it has to be during open sessions. So, it puts us in a very interesting position, doesn't it? But, again, I'm a huge proponent for the PTSA. Please join.
Ms. Anderson.
Again, I want to reiterate that I wasn't the one who came up with the idea of shortening people's time, okay? However, however, I compromised with the idea of, if we have a large number of speakers, my first thought was 35, and that I compromised in our meeting at 45, because I felt like at least everyone would get a chance to speak. And I didn't want somebody to have to be speaking at 1:00 in the morning, and people wouldn't be able to stay that long, whatever. So, my point is, you know, if we, if we have a certain number that we say, okay, 45, and that is a large number of people, and it may never happen again. Maybe we'll never have another contentious thing to talk about, who knows? But, you know, I wouldn't count on, I wouldn't bet on that. We probably will have another time when we'll have 45 or more speakers. But I did compromise on that, because even at 45, it's going to, if you give everybody two minutes, it's still would going to be a long time that we're going to be sitting here listening, and then finally getting to the work of the board will be probably in the morning, morning hours. So, I just want to make it clear, though, that by having a number out there like that, say 45 speakers, and then if that happens, then changing it to two minutes each, would allow everyone a chance to speak, instead of people getting tired and saying, oh, gosh, everybody, three minutes. I know, that's, I mean, three minutes is not very long. I was, I was a teacher who came and spoke to the board when we had four minutes, and I thought that was short. So, I'm sure that three minutes now seems short to people, but, but if you have 45 speakers, and usually if it's a contentious topic, that most people are going to be speaking about the same thing. And most people are going to be saying the same thing, believe it or not. I mean, you're going to have a large number of people coming to speak on one topic, over and over and over, they're going to say the pretty much the same things, but I want everybody, I want to hear from everyone. And if you don't, if you can't stay till 1:00 in the morning, or 2:00 in the morning, you know, you can always email us, so we can always hear from you that way. And I kind of agree with Ms. Martin, in that sometimes I'd rather hear from people through their email than I would personally, because, you know, after some, after you hear 45 speakers, you know, pretty much it's like, okay, well, I've heard the same thing over and over and over, and it's not like I'm not listening to you, I'm listening, but I'm tired of listening to the same rhetoric over and over and over. And we try to use our, you know, we try to be reasonable when we make these decisions, and we want to hear from people, but sometimes it's better to hear from them through an email. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown.
This is going to be quick. Madam Chair, I'd like to see us move this back to the Policy Review Committee, so we can determine how to move forward from there. Thank you.
Are we all in agreement? Okay. All right, so we'll bring this back to PRC.
All right. Moving on to our first of our policies would be, one of our remaining policies, we were looking at for the last couple of months, was Section 4, which is personnel. We'd be looking at Policy 462, which is evaluation license personnel. There are some significant changes to update this to be current. We were out of date on this one last month, 2018, and there had been some changes in 2021 that needed to be updated. So you'll see a significant amount of changes in Section A, talking about the, introducing the different aspects that have to be considered in there, including, one of the issues you'll see is under A6, putting in the culture response of teaching equitable practices on there. Also noting that student academic progress must be a significant component, overall summative rating and teacher evaluation. And then there are other issues, other matters that are listed, 1 through 4 on Section A. There are some strikeouts in Section B involving the evaluator training, and some updates on the legal notices. I think the best qualified person to answer questions would be Mrs. Woodhouse on this particular section.
So, this policy states that the superintendent shall provide the school board with a written recommendation, recommended procedure for evaluation for the school board to consider and adopt. And since we've made some, or making some significant changes here, do we have that recommendation ready yet, or is that something you still need to work on, Dr. Robertson?
So, I'll look at that, too. And this comes directly out of state language, so.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. But I think the procedures are the specifics of the, the performance indicators, and how it's going to be evaluated. My point is, I would like, I think it would be nice to have that with the policy, since it says that we have to adopt it. The board has to adopt it.
You want the actual instrument itself, is what you're asking?
Well, it says the board has to adopt that, so it would be kind of nice to do it at the same time, I think.
I think, if I'm correct, if you look, the best example for you all, when you did the superintendent's evaluation, you had that long, like 120-page document that went through all the reasoning for it, and then there's suggestion on it, I believe there's something similar to that, that we'd be looking at, and Ms. would ask, recommendation, what the instrument would look like. So I think you would have to be modeling your instrument after that, but do you want us to bring this back after? I will say, we are out of compliance, we do need to bring it up fairly quickly, so we can't put this off significantly longer, but.
Yeah, I mean, the recommended procedure for evaluation, so whatever you feel that that would be.
And so, Dr. Robertson, Ms. Manning, to address your question, that would be the frequency of who we evaluate, when, our probationary versus our continuing contract, all of our rubrics that we have identified, and actually, all of that information is already posted on the HR website. So if you want, I'm not for sure if you want to make all of that into policy, but we'll be glad to bring all of that to your attention. It does change as the state puts out new guidelines, and we do follow state code around our probationary employees, and how often and frequent they, too, have to be evaluated. So we have that information, it's just a matter of putting it all together, and Dr. Robertson, working with the board on how best to share that information.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my recommendation, would just be to send it back, to have all of that come back to us at the same time. Is that?
Hi, may I?
Well, I have some other people.
I know, but I want to, I want to speak to what she just said.
But, Mr. Culpepper, and then you can.
Yeah, it actually shortcuts what I was going to say. I basically just say, I second that. I'd like to see that detail diggerther, doubles the details on this, on the stuff.
Ms. Anderson.
So, I want to say that, even though I see your point, but we are out of compliance with this, and our teachers have been teaching already this year. The first nine weeks is getting ready to be over, just in a couple of weeks, and they're being evaluated on this, on these guidelines, yet we haven't adopted them yet. So, we really need to move this forward, and between now and the next meeting, when we actually vote on it, we can bring this information that they're asking for back with this at the next meeting, but I don't think this needs to go back. These are, as Dr. Robertson said, this is directly from DOE. We're not adding anything, and I think it's irresponsible of us to not go ahead and move this forward for a vote at the next meeting, because of the fact that by the time we do vote on it at the next meeting, the teachers will already have, they've already taught for one, our first quarter of the year. So, it'll just delay it another, at least another two to three weeks, and I don't think that's fair to do to them, when they're being evaluated on this already, as it's written. So that information that you need to understand can be given to us at the next meeting before, before we actually vote on it. So I don't support sending it back, again, for any clarification, or so that we can have the information. I think the information can come back at the next meeting.
Well, actually, that information can be sent to us before then. We don't have to wait till the next meeting, so we'll have it longer time to look at. So I think, I think that can be done, if everybody's okay with that.
No problem.
Yeah. Okay. So let's, let's.
So bring this, do you want this to go forward for consent?
Yes.
But in the meantime, have the administration send you the substantive.
Right.
I'm sorry. Oh, you're right, it's active, it's a policy for action, so it'll get, we'll send, put it on the action agenda. If you're not ready, obviously, you can just delay the vote again. In the meantime, the school administration will bring you the information before then.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
All right, we'll put that on for action for the next time. All right, moving in, as we've mentioned, we've been working, starting to work through Section 5 of the policies. Section 5 deals with student issues, so the first one up for tonight would be Policy 56. The recommendation is to amend the title to Student Parent Legal Guardian Appeals, and at the matters affecting students. The significant change would happen in the second paragraph, which would now read, "A student or the parent, legal guardian or minor student has the right to initiate an appeal in accordance with applicable law or regulation. Where no law, policy, or regulation specifically grants the right to an appeal of a certain action affecting a student by a teacher or administrator, the superintendent or designated will have sole discretion as to whether an appeal will be considered. The school board will only consider an appeal of an action affecting a student when law, policy, or regulation specifically requires the school board do so." And then there are minor scrivenor changes after that. So those are the recommendations coming out of PRC. Are there any questions about Policy 56 recommendations? Hearing no questions on Policy 56, I will move on to Policy 511. Policy 511 only has minor scrivenor changes. Policy 511 is age, compulsory attendance, and exemptions, and they're just some simple minor changes, and a reference on the second-to-last paragraph of whether enrolling students receive a copy of the School Division compulsory attendance laws, which we do send to them, or an online access link, which everyone does receive at the beginning of the year. Otherwise, we're just doing some minor changes to that. Are there any questions on Policy 511?
Ms. Martin.
I'm just curious, I see on here where it says there's going to be a link to the policy, but I'm confused on when someone who is 16 and 1/2 has their independent education plan, they got their six-part plan done, when they take that GED, do they stay on our daily school membership, or once that GED is done, and they're under 18, are they off our school average daily membership roster?
If they, technically, I think they could continue on if they wanted to. We would, I believe we excuse them from compulsory attendance. If you were 14 and graduated, if you got your high school diploma, you would no longer be subject to having to, because you've completed your high school diploma. But I do believe, much like a special education student, if you don't get the regular diploma and you wanted to come back to us and to continue on taking courses, I do think we have to allow you up to 20 years old, if you're not, as long as you're in good condition. So, I do think if you've reached the, you've gotten a GED, that you are excused from attendance at that point, but if you wanted to come back and continue to work, let's say you went out for a year, worked, and came back, we would certainly allow you to come back in, but technically, we're not going, if you've got the GED, we wouldn't be coming after you for compulsory attendance.
Right, but would you still count on the census? As exempt, you're on the roster, but you're exempt from attendance.
I think it's, are you, let me see if I can, you've got your GED, but you're not coming to school, so let's say you got your GED at 16.
You're down, you're going to TCC.
So, yeah, so the next September, you're not on a roster, we wouldn't count you, because you wouldn't be enrolled, if I'm correct.
Okay.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, I'm going to check with Mr. Jameson. I believe that as soon as you get your GED, you come off.
You're off. Okay, all right. Thank you.
And that's when you're doing your September counts, and that's what we're checking to see, at that point, determine whether you need to be in school or not. But I don't believe we're going to be looking at you for compulsory attendance at that point, because we've got a record that you have your GED.
So, then just another quick question. So you have to have a six-point, you know, independent education plan. Does the superintendent sign off on that, or is that just a principal-student-parent decision?
I believe you sign, like an ICAP agreement. I think you're signing with, there's a committee that works with you at the principal level, but I'm not sure if, I'm not sure what the sign-off is.
Yeah, the superintendent does the sign-off.
Does not, so it's a school-based decision.
I think there's a team that puts together for ICAP, that, that team works with you, and it's probably whoever your principal is at the school, or if you're over at the Adult Learning Center.
Do we know if that team checks in and makes sure, makes sure the student is actually meeting those six criteria?
I think we need to get Dr. Phillips in here to talk to you, because this is his area.
We'll look at that later. All right. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Policy, I'm sorry, any further questions? Moving on to Policy 512, which is legal withdrawal. Again, there are only minor scrivenor changes that we're updating throughout this policy, otherwise there are no recommended changes to the 512 policy. Are there any questions about 512? Hearing no questions on Policy 512, I will move on to 513, which is home instruction. Again, just a minor changes on there, recognizing that parent legal guardians of minor children, and designate that, other than that, there are no recommended changes, other than that, to Policy 513. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions on 513, we'll move on to 517, which is absences, truancy, parental notification, we went over a lot of that earlier tonight on there. Again, there are simply minor changes in here, recommendations as to how we currently handle amount of notification to parents, other than that, we are not recommending changes this time to the Policy 517. Any questions?
Franklin.
Not really a question. Madam Chair, can we make sure that we do have that workshop scheduled regarding the truancy discussion?
Yeah, I've already talked to Dr. Robertson.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hearing no further questions on 517, I will look at 521. 521 is our overall policy on student suspension and expulsions. We did update this a couple of years ago, when the General Assembly did that, so the only, made some significant changes to the length of time and the reasons for suspension expulsion. So the only changes that we're recommending at this time are simply scrivenor changes throughout, having to do with some minor grammatical issues on there. Are there any questions on Policy 521? This is a longer policy on that, but like I said, we did look at this a couple of years ago, when the General Assembly changed along that. Hearing no changes on Policy, sorry, no questions on Policy 521, we will move on to Policy 536. All right, Policy 536 is conduct, again, the scenario conduct involving punitive actions, and again, Policy 536 is only a minor change. And again, policy five thirty-six is only a minor change in paragraph B four and B two. Are there any questions about policy five thirty-six? Hearing no question on policy five thirty-six, we will move on to policy seven. Policy seven is in our section, section seven areas. You've heard me speak at some of the other, I'm sorry, were there questions? Okay. Policy seven has to do with the freedom of information. I know I've mentioned this in a couple of other committee meetings. We've done some work, a lot of work this summer to update our procedures on freedom of information and our policies for doing that. And part of this is we were looking at the policies. We updated the regulation and the food information rights that were required to have. This went online last month. And we were looking at policy, the recommended changes on that. We had been working through some policy changes. There had been a recommendation from a school board member, but PRC looked at that. It looked, we adopted a lot of the changes into the actual regulation that's currently online. So the only recommendations at this time that we are recommending for the policy review is to change the title, Access to Records of Freedom of Information Act, to recognize the food information in the first sentence, and to add a section C that the FOIA officer regulations requesting records are under FOIA and explanation for the FOIA officer. Again, you would have seen in the other committees when we put up the regulations and the FOIA rights are all online. And then we've updated those processes this summer. So we didn't feel it was necessary to put all that in the policy since it was already in the regulations.
Ms. Manning?
Ms. Brown?
Okay. Um, so in the policy review committee, we talked about the regulation and including that in this packet, there was some language we had discussed when we were in the PRC. Emailed it.
Was it the language on the estimating the amounts?
Yes. Prior to conducting a search for records, the public body shall notify the requestor in writing that the public body may make reasonable charges not to exceed the actual cost incurred in assessing, oh, sorry, accessing, duplicating, supplying, or searching for the requested records and make inquiry of the requestor whether they would like to request a cost estimate in advance of supplying the requested records. Are we going to be able to have a, the regulation here prior to the vote?
We can fix that. We've actually been implementing that procedure in the last couple of weeks, doing it that way, but we did not update the regulation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Manning?
So I'm looking at FOIA right now. And one of the updates to the law this past year, this past session is two point two dash thirty-seven oh four point one, section A seven. And it says, "A written policy explaining how the public body assesses charges for accessing or searching for records and noting the current fee charged." So in this policy, I don't see where we're compliant with that.
I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure that the General Assembly distinguishes between policies and regulations. And we tend to put those information into regulations. So ours are, we do have the cost broken down in both the regulations and the notice. And that's where we put it in there. We didn't put it in.
Okay, I didn't see it. I, I haven't looked at the regulations because I didn't realize that that's what you did. But on the, on the website, on our, our district website, it's not on there, under the FOIA, the rights and responsibilities and the notification.
Check the regulation on there because I think we put a set cost. I remember we're putting a set cost for, per hour on that.
Yeah, I haven't, I don't have that access.
Per page. I know we made those changes in September. We were looking at those. We worked on this this summer. We've come up with an average cost of thirty-five dollars an hour instead of the different costs on there. And then we standardized the cost per page. And then we have a set cost. I think we decided, I don't, I'm sorry, I just don't have the regulation in front of me right now, but I believe if it took less than an hour, we aren't charging for it. The work on there was only over an hour. So I think that was one of the changes.
So it's in current regulation right now online?
Should be in the regulation online, yes.
Okay, I'll look at that.
Should be five seven point.
And then the second one is section B under that. Thank you, Dr. Robertson and Dr. Saltner. I know you worked with Ms. Lanetti to get the rights and responsibilities on our website. I see that there. But one thing that it tells us that we have to do is we have to post a link on our website to the online public comment form on the Freedom of Information Advisory Council's website to enable, to enable any requestor to comment about the public body. And I couldn't find that link anywhere on our website.
I'll go back and check. I know when we switched over the website this summer, a lot of the stuff we had didn't get switched over. Freedom of information is one of those areas. I'll go back and make sure we've got that on there.
I think everything else is on there, but that's the one thing that I did see that's, that's on there. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Ms. Lanetti, I had a question about the FOIA requests. When Mr. Sutton was still here, we, he was providing regular updates about the requests that were coming in and who was requesting the date and time and that sort of thing. I haven't seen any emails about that recently.
My understanding was that, was when it had to do with, had to do with the school board member. We actually, and you may not have been in the committees, but we've shown some of the committees what we've done. We created a, an, a, a online log that has all of them. And there's multiple of us that can do this. So you see, we've got our new FOIA officer who's in handling that, but also my office has rights, docile. We had Mr. Malkowski was also doing it. Some of us have rights into an ongoing log. Everything is in there in the law that you can get into. All the responses are in there. We put it all there. My understanding with Mr. Sutton was he was to tell you when it had to do with the request for your records on there, not necessarily all the FOIA records.
No, we were getting all of the, yeah.
Okay, I'll just have to talk to Laura Beth about that, make sure we've got it.
Ms. Tonyata?
Thank you. I have the practice of sending it out on Fridays. If I haven't done it in a week or two, it's because of the move that we had. So I do send that FOIA log to the board members every Friday. And it's also uploaded on your SharePoint site. And in the email that I send, there's a direct link for you to see the FOIA requests. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Is it directly into the new log that we have?
I will double check with Laura Beth that.
Yeah, if you take a look at our new log that we came up, my office developed this summer, you'll see it all, this, all, all the FOIA requests are there. You can actually get in, you can take a look at everything we've responded to on that. So, so I think that's what you were getting the link to.
Okay.
And we'll be happy to show that too, if you want to see the work we've done with that area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I believe at this time that that ends the recommendations of the policy review committee for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. So we're now on C, state accreditation and federal accountability, the status of our schools. We're going to welcome Scott Dunn, the testing specialist.
Hi.
Hi, Scott.
How are you? Good to see you all. All right, good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. I am Scott Dunn, a testing specialist within the Office of Student Assessment from the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability. I'm here tonight to provide you with an overview of the status of our schools as it relates to the state accreditation and federal accountability system. Before I begin the update, I would like to put this presentation in context for you. At the September twenty-sixth school board meeting, we shared preliminary SOL data. And Mr. Delaney and Mrs. Calucci shared an overview of the school leadership and the Department of Teaching and Learning's school support process with you. At the next meeting of the school board, Mrs. Calucci and members of the Teaching and Learning Team shared a high-level instructional overview of how VBCPS delivers, excuse me, develops and delivers differentiated instruction in response to student data to ensure we address the needs of all learners. She also shared additional data beyond SOL test scores that helps inform our support efforts. Tonight's presentation will provide an overview of the state and federal accountability system, including the indicators used in the systems and how our schools fared on the indicators. As a reminder, plans to address SOL performance indicators were shared with the school board over the last two meetings. Therefore, tonight's presentation will focus on plans for the, addressing the non-SOL performance indicators that are part of the accountability system, such as the College, Career, and Civic Readiness Indicator, or CCCRI, and chronic absenteeism. As you are aware, schools are accountable under two different systems. State accreditation, where each school is identified with an accreditation status, and federal accountability, where schools can be identified as needing assistance. Both systems come with their own set of rules. I will start this evening with a brief refresher of the state accreditation system, including the indicators and benchmarks that are part of the system before discussing the performance of our schools. There are six indicators for elementary and middle schools and nine indicators for high schools. They are listed on the screen for your review. We will discuss each of these indicators in depth. As a reminder, student performance for the purposes of state accreditation takes into account three success criteria to calculate combined rate for English and math. The first success criteria is passing the test. The second success criteria for grades three through eight, reading and math, is student growth. Students who do not pass the reading or math test but show growth based on established progress tables count as successful. There is no SOL student growth applied for students in high school. The third success criteria focuses on the performance of English learners. Students identified as English learners who do not pass the reading test and do not show SOL student growth in reading but show gains on their annual English learner assessment count as successful. For science, the pass rate is all that is calculated. The other success criteria do not apply. Achievement data for reading and writing combined, math and science, are reported for all students as a group. Reading and writing combined and math are also disaggregated by reporting groups. The area of history is not part of the accreditation system. However, history is still required to be taught and assessed and is still a requirement for graduation. The accreditation system also includes chronic absenteeism, which is calculated for all the, for the all-students group at each school. A student is defined as chronically absent if the student misses ten percent or more, excused or unexcused, full days of the school year. Due to the impact the pandemic has on the, had on attendance, the Virginia Department of Education excluded chronic absenteeism from factoring into the 2021, 22, and 22, 23 accreditation ratings. High schools have additional state accreditation indicators, one of which is a graduation and completion index. This is a Board of Education-approved formula that awards points based on the student's on-time completion status. On this slide, you will see the different completion types and point values awarded for each completion type. I'll pause there for a second. High schools also have a dropout rate indicator. Dropouts are students who discontinued schooling and have not earned a diploma, GED, or certificate of completion. These are students who are not enrolled in another public school, private school, or approved education program. Finally, for high school accreditation, there is a College, Career, and Civic Readiness Index indicator. This indicator represents the percentage of graduates who have received credit for advanced coursework or have earned a CTE credential and completed a CTE program of study, or have participated in a service experience or a work-based learning experience, or successfully completed three years of JROTC coursework and earned an approved industry credential. This portion of the accreditation system took effect for the first time with 2023 graduating class, the current accreditation year. For each indicator, schools receive a performance level of one, two, or three. The performance level is calculated for a current year average and a three-year average. Whichever is higher is applied to the indicator. For 2324 accreditation, the three-year average was based on 1819, 2122, and 2223. That is one year of pre-pandemic data and the past two years of data combined. Because accreditation was waived in 1920 and 2021, data from these two years were not used for the three-year average. They were excluded. Level one indicates that a school's achievement on the specific indicator demonstrates performance at or above the benchmark or adequate improvement in the indicator as defined by the state. Level two indicates that a school's achievement on the specific indicator is below the performance benchmarks but close to the range of measurement for level one or adequate improvement in the indicator as defined by the state. And level three indicates that a school's achievement is well below the performance benchmark. An indicator that is level two or three for four consecutive years automatically becomes a level three in the fifth year and stays there until the school achieves a level one status on that indicator. Here are the expected performance levels for the indicators that pertain to all levels, elementary, middle, and high schools. The indicator is listed on the left, and on the right are the expected benchmarks for each of the performance levels. If you look at the top row, you will see that level one for English reading and writing combined rate is seventy-five percent or higher. If a school earns between a seventy-four percent and sixty-six percent, this indicator would be identified as a level two. And if the school earned sixty-five percent or lower in this area, the school would be identified as a level three. Here are the expected performance levels for the other school quality indicators that only pertain to high schools. I'll pause for a moment so you can review the slide. A school is accredited when all of their school quality indicators are in the level one or level two range of performance. Schools that are accredited but have an indicator at the level two range for the all-student group are required to go through an academic review process that is monitored by the local school division. Any school that has a school quality indicator at a level two for a specific reporting group must implement a multi-year school improvement plan that will be monitored by the local school division. Now, when a school has any school quality indicator identified as level three, the school is identified as accredited with conditions and is required to work cooperatively and in consultation with the Department of Education to develop a corrective action plan. When a school or school division fails to implement school division or school corrective action plans according to planned timelines or has taken no action on identified strategies and interventions, the school is reviewed for potential designation by the board as accreditation denied. Now, a school's accreditation is reviewed every year. However, once a school is accredited for three years in a row by meeting the established benchmarks, they enter triennial accreditation where they are accredited for three additional years. During that triennial accreditation cycle, if an accredited school does not meet a benchmark, they are expected to address the areas of concern through an academic review and/or a school improvement plan with monitoring. Because accreditation was waived in 1920 and 2021, those two years were not included in the three-year cycle. Last year, all VBCPS schools were in year one, two, or three of their three-year cycle or just had earned accreditation for their third year in a row to earn triennial accreditation. As you are aware, the VDOE publishes a school quality profile for each school and division in the Commonwealth. When you visit a school's school quality profile under the accreditation tab, you will see a table like these samples on the screen. The tables show that these schools are accredited and met all six or nine indicators depending on the level of the school. They were accredited last year and they are in their triennial cycle. Here are some more examples of what you'd see on the VDOE school quality profile. These schools are also accredited and in their triennial cycle but were below standard or level three for one of the six or nine indicators as circled. The profile page for each school also includes a color-coded summary of performance for each of these indicators. For the 2324 school year, all VBCPS schools are accredited. It's great news. All right, when we take a deeper look at how many schools received certain performance ratings, we see that there were thirty-two schools that had a final performance level at level one for all indicators, which for all indicators, which is 39% of our schools. Another 40 schools, or 49% of our schools, had final performance levels at level-one and two for all indicators. Each elementary and middle school had 20 individual indicators to meet, and each high school had 23, equaling 1,676 indicators division-wide. Our schools met the level-one benchmark for 1,432 indicators, which is 85%. This is good news, but we still have a lot of work to do, and some of our schools will require additional assistance based on the ratings they received. When looking at the accreditation indicators for the all-students group on the left and gap groups on the right, we have schools that earned level-two in English, Science, and Math, and level-three in Science. The schools on the left will also, will all undergo a VDOE academic review and a required school improvement process that will be monitored by the school division. Although not required by VDOE, the schools on the right will also be involved in a school improvement process that will be monitored by the school division. I'll pause there for a second. This year, chronic absenteeism was calculated after a few years of being waived due to the pandemic. As you can see, 36 schools earned a level-two rating and eight schools earned a level-three rating. The Virginia Board of Education did determine that for chronic absenteeism, a three-year rate would not be calculated, and for the 23-24 accreditation, they would only look at the current-year data for 2223. As mentioned earlier, the CCCRI was calculated for accreditation for the first time, and eight of the 11 high schools earned a level-two rating while the other four earned a level-one rating. At this time, we are waiting for VDOE to share any required actions for improvement in these areas. These schools will, however, address absenteeism and CCCRI in their school improvement plans. To address chronic absenteeism, each school will be required to monitor attendance, include goals and action steps in their plan for continuous improvement around their attendance data, and review their data, goals, and action steps at least monthly throughout the year. As a reminder, last year, the Office of Student Support Services provided all schools with a new Student Response Team Attendance Support Plan, Resources for Chronic Absenteeism, and a list of tiered interventions to proactively address compulsory attendance. Through the work of our School Board Attorneys and School Social Work Services, VBCPS had a dedicated docket with the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court to hear up to five truancy cases per month, and that began in January 2023. The Office of Student Support Services worked with administrators, counselors, and central office leaders to enhance the plan from last year. Virginia Beach City Public Schools continues to explore other resources, services, and programs for chronic absenteeism because we recognize this as a multifaceted issue involving our schools, communities, and families. With new funds becoming available from the VDOE, the Department of School Leadership and the Office of Student Support Services are working together to confirm how these new funds will be spent to help schools address the state accreditation measure. All schools are closely monitoring attendance data. Multiple offices and departments will continue to be available to support schools throughout the year. Yes?
Bullet item number two, you make reference to something referred to as a PCI goal. Can you tell me what a PCI is?
Yes, the Plan for Continuous Improvement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. To address CCCRI, service learning has been included in the English 10 curriculum. A shared document capturing service learning details for students has been created so that the division and school staff can monitor progress towards completion for each student. Each high school has identified a staff member to verify service learning projects for seniors to ensure that each student in the building receives credit for the work they have completed. Administrators are creating a service learning rubric for seniors to follow, ensuring that all facets of the service learning experience are completed with fidelity across the division. Now, as you may be aware, the Virginia Board of Education has started discussing changes to our current accreditation system. They are researching various indicators. They have discussed separating out an achievement indicator from a growth indicator, keeping both but reporting them separately. They have also mentioned adding a reading proficiency indicator at grade-three, an advanced math courses indicator for middle school, and a math proficiency by grade-eight indicator. They are considering keeping a chronic absenteeism indicator, a graduation indicator, and a college, career, and civic readiness indicator. They have also been discussing about how to report these data and what would be required to be accredited. Discussions are ongoing, and approval of an updated system is expected in July 2024. This means that the new system would be in place for the accreditation ratings awarded in 2526 based on data from the 2425 school year. We do not anticipate large changes in the accountability system this year, but we'll keep the school board and schools informed of any changes that occur to the state accountability system moving forward. In addition to accreditation ratings from the Virginia Department of Education, schools in Virginia are also held to federal accountability standards implemented as part of the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, also known as ESSA. Unlike the state system where ratings are assigned, the federal accountability system is used to identify schools across the state most in need of the additional support and All right, so follow along with this. To help explain the data that are used to determine a school's level of support in federal accountability, this chart compares federal accountability measures to the state accreditation indicators reviewed earlier in this presentation. State accreditation is summarized on the left, and the federal accountability is summarized on the right. SOL scores are considered in both systems. State accreditation also considers reading and writing combined, math and science, while federal accountability only looks at scores in reading and math. State accreditation rates combine passing scores and student growth, while federal accountability only reviews passing scores. English learner progress is embedded in state accreditation combined rates, but for the federal accountability, this progress is a separate indicator. Academic growth is also embedded in accreditation combined rates. For federal accountability, growth on SOL tests will be considered when determining schools who will be identified to receive support. While both systems look at reporting groups like special education and economically disadvantaged, state accreditation has a set benchmark of 70% for all groups in math and science and 75% for English, which is reading and writing combined. Federal accountability has interim benchmarks for math and reading, and they are different for each reporting group and each year. And for each year. Yes, thank you. Both systems do include a measure of chronic absenteeism and are calculated the same way. Both systems include graduation indicators. The Graduation and Completion Index for Accreditation is the point-based system, and the federal graduation indicator calculates students who earn a standard, advanced, and IB diplomas. Keep in mind, neither is calculated the same as the state's on-time graduation rate. It's crystal clear. State accreditation also utilizes the cohort dropout rate and college and career civic readiness indicator for high schools that we discussed earlier, while federal accountability does not consider either. We built this chart to kind of explain some of that, the comparisons, because it gets real muddy when you look at them separately. At this time, VDOE has not yet informed schools whether or not they have been designated for support or improvement under ESSA. We did have schools that did not meet the 95% participation rate for one or more groups as required under ESSA. Participation is calculated for all students as a group and for the various reporting groups. The VDOE's Office of School Quality requires that schools develop a plan which includes action steps for improving participation rates and monitoring these steps. This plan is only required if the reason for students not participating was preventable by an action from the school. For that reason, we are still analyzing participation data to determine the reasons for which students were not tested. Once we have a clear picture, we will assist schools in the creating appropriate goals and strategies to ensure students who can test are tested. In some cases where groups are small, one or two students missing a test due to illness brought a school below the required 95%. In a case like this, the school would not be required to develop a plan. The Office of Student Assessment will continue to review participation data with these schools and work with them to identify areas where improvements can be made. As we celebrate the news of all schools being accredited, as well as many other successes in our division, we will remain focused on continuous improvement. Schools with level-two and three indicators, academic, chronic absenteeism, and CCCRI will be working closely with division leaders throughout the year, and schools with a lower-than-95% participation rate on state tests will address this in their plans for continuous improvement. Over a series of board meetings, you have heard us describe the work that is going on throughout the division and how schools are identified for supports based on their needs. Part of that identification process is based on the state accreditation and federal accountability data you saw tonight. High-priority schools that are most in need have been identified and are being closely monitored and supported. Schools and central office have drilled down into the data and created data-driven goals and are working on implementing aligned strategies that focus on student success. Schools are engaged in teaching and assessing new content while simultaneously working to fill any gaps. They will adjust their improvement plans as data are collected and analyzed. Throughout the school year, central office staff will monitor goals and strategies, engage staff in aligned professional learning as needed, and provide the resources needed to assist schools in their work. And this concludes my presentation. Do you all have any questions or anything I can take back and provide answers for at a later time?
Mr. Callen.
Your notes were far more substantive than what we were able to see on the screen. I'd like to make a request to obtain a copy of your notes to get a deeper dive into the material and an understanding thereof, if you'd be so kind.
Sure, absolutely.
To the board.
We sure will.
Ms. Melnick.
Goodness, I remember when we were first presented the new science standards, and we had to take that little test, and, I mean, I think I remember saying, "Oh, my goodness, and good luck," is what I said, and, but I knew I had so much faith in our teachers and this division, and so I honestly was expecting the science to be worse, and it wasn't. So that's, it says level-three was two elementary schools, so kudos to the division and the teachers on that move because that was, that was, that was a big shift for our students, especially since the fifth-grade science is cumulative, fourth and fifth grade. That's huge, huge for these kids. But I think the saddest report to me is the level-three chronic absenteeism, which we've talked about and we're going to continue to talk about, but it breaks my heart to see that five elementary schools were level-three for that indicator, and that makes me really sad because, as we said earlier, that is sometimes indicative of, indicative of, it's probably not really their fault. And so, but otherwise, thank you. You going through it really, really helped.
It's a lot of information.
It is.
And we test throughout the school year, and I'm glad that we can come here and, you know, and fall and discuss it with you all and provide clarity because you're not, you know, in the weeds with it all the time. And it's still quite, it's quite a bit of information for the principals and the other schools, and they call and ask questions. It's, as you see, it's rather, it can be confusing.
Right, and then to see the discrepancies between the state and federal and the blanks that are there in that chart, but that explained a lot.
As you all may know, we provide an abundance of data, especially from our Office of Student Assessment. We have tons of platforms that provide data. There's lots and lots of information out there, and whether they know to sort through it. There's lots of training and emphasis placed on data-driven goals, and we will continue to do that and provide as much information as we have as things change.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Manning.
Thank you, great presentation.
Okay, thank you.
And the VDOE does provide a lot of helpful information for families if they want to look up a specific school. I've kind of done a deep dive in that, and it's pretty user-friendly. I want to go to the history SOL. I know that it's not required by the state, but you made a comment that I didn't quite catch. It's required for graduation? Is that what you said? So we require the history SOL for graduation?
Yes.
To pass it?
VDOE requires, yeah, it's a diploma requirement to get, receive a verified credit for history for graduation.
Okay, but, but the VDOE does not consider that SOL as part of accreditation? Is that what it is?
Correct.
Ah, okay.
But it's still just a requirement for graduation, yes.
Okay, so do we get that information, Dr. Robertson, on the history pass rate for the history SOL?
Yes, and if you recall, not many kids take those assessments, and the scores have been poor. Although we outperform the state, the scores were poor, not nearly what they used to be.
Why don't they take it if they don't, if they need it for graduation?
For verified credit.
For verified credit, but don't they all need that as a credit?
Yeah, they can also get it through, I believe, their AP options.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Their substitute test.
Oh, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Ms. Weems.
Yes, I too was saddened to see the high absenteeism at elementary level. So when we get the workshop on truancy and chronic absenteeism, can we have some data of who is absent? Is there some sort of demographic or age, you know, who, what, what students continue to be absent? Why? What reason do they give? And when are they absent? Can we just get, I mean, I'm sure you already have that, just some data, but that would be interesting. Are they absent on Mondays and Fridays? Are they absent the three days, the three days before Thanksgiving break? You know, kind of, kind of just to kind of get a feel of all that.
We'll get that information together, absolutely.
Who, why, and when? Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was fantastic presentation. We appreciate that.
It was great to see you all. Thank you so much.
Next is our Canvas Year One Implementation Evaluation. Welcome, Dr. Allison Bach, excuse me, Program Evaluation Specialist.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Dr. Allison Bach, a Program Evaluation Specialist with the Office of Research and Evaluation. This evening, I'll provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the Implementation Evaluation for Canvas, the school division's learning management system. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. The Virginia Department of Education adopted Canvas as the statewide LMS in 2021. They are offering Canvas for free for all school divisions for five years. Virginia Beach began piloting Canvas with seven schools in 2122, while the rest of the schools use SchoolAGI as their LMS. In 2223, all schools were expected to use Canvas for grades three through 12. In addition, Mastery Connect was purchased by the division in 2223 as the platform to administer division-wide assessments and is integrated within Canvas. Canvas and Mastery Connect are both instructure applications. The main purposes of an LMS include providing an application for accessing educational content, delivering course content to students... delivering course content to students, and assessing students' learning. The Implementation Evaluation focused on the instructional and assessment components of Canvas, data management and integration processes, professional learning, parent access, initial progress toward meeting outcome goals, stakeholder satisfaction, and costs to the division. Staff, students in grades four to 12, and parents were surveyed in April 2023. Overall response rates and total number of respondents are shown on the slide. Respondents were provided an initial question regarding whether they use Canvas during the school year. Survey data will be provided for those who indicated they use Canvas. In addition, teacher and student data were gathered from Canvas and cost data were collected. The first goal was that Canvas will allow teachers to design and deliver high-quality instructional materials for their students. To ensure teachers had access to high-quality materials, the Department of Teaching and Learning provided staff curriculum resources through Google Docs. When teachers were surveyed about using these resources for their Canvas courses, as shown by their first set of bars, higher percentages of elementary school and middle school teachers indicated they use these resources than high school teachers. When surveyed about using Canvas with students, higher percentages of secondary teachers, grade three through five, five teachers, indicated they designed and stored content for their students and their courses and agreed that they provided a variety of learning activities for students, such as assignments and discussion boards. Regarding the ease of using Canvas for students, at least 85% of students at all levels agree that they can easily find things they need for their classes in Canvas. The second goal was that Canvas will allow teachers to assess student learning through a variety of methods. Canvas offers assessment of student learning through several methods, including discussion boards, assignments, and quizzes. In addition, beginning in 2223, Mastery Connect has been utilized as the platform to administer division-wide assessments. Mastery Connect is integrated within Canvas and allows for assessments to be aligned with standards. Overall, compared to elementary school teachers, higher percentages of secondary teachers agreed they used a variety of assessment methods in Canvas to check for learning, that they use Canvas to provide formative feedback, and that Canvas allowed them to effectively monitor student learning. When surveyed specifically about Mastery Connect, as shown by the last set of bars, overall lower percentages of teachers at all levels agreed Mastery Connect allowed them to effectively monitor student learning. In addition, when students were surveyed about assessment in Canvas, at least 82% of students at all levels agreed they can show what they know in a variety of ways in Canvas. The third goal was that Canvas will integrate with other VBCPS platforms to ensure efficiency and accuracy. When ITSs were surveyed about transitioning data between Canvas and other systems, ITS agreement was higher for items about the processes being accurate compared to items about the processes being efficient. In addition, when secondary staff were surveyed about the process of grades syncing from Canvas to Synergy, which is the official grade book of record, low percentages of teachers and ITSs agreed that the grade passback process was efficient and accurate. Comments from staff focused on the process being cumbersome and lengthy, grades not updating correctly, and inefficiency of resyncing or manually updating grades. The fourth goal was that professional learning opportunities and support will provide staff with the necessary information to utilize Canvas and Mastery Connect. Professional learning on Canvas was offered to staff through Camp Canvas in the summer of 2022. This was a full-day, in-person event with many sessions on various aspects of using Canvas. This was a, school ITSs also provided training to school staff on Canvas, and additional self-paced resources were provided online through the VBCPS Instructional Technology Google site, Canvas Help menu, and courses offered through Virtual Virginia. Nearly all ITSs agreed the professional learning they've received on Canvas allowed them to support teachers, and at least 82% of administrators agreed the professional learning provided them with the necessary knowledge for Canvas implementation. Somewhat lower percentages of teachers agreed the professional learning they received provided them with the necessary knowledge to use Canvas in their classroom. In addition, from 75% to 90% of teachers at all levels and at least 90% of ITSs and administrators agreed that when there was an issue related to Canvas, help was, available resources were provided, and there was a timely resolution. Staff were also surveyed about the professional learning and support received related to Mastery Connect, the new division assessment platform. Professional learning for Mastery Connect was provided to ITSs and math and literacy coaches who provided support for teachers in their use of Mastery Connect. In addition, self-paced resources on Mastery Connect were available online. Overall, lower percentages of staff agreed that the professional learning they received on Mastery Connect provided them with the necessary knowledge needed for implementation, especially for teachers and secondary ITSs. In addition, lower percentages of teachers and administrators agreed that when there was an issue related to Mastery Connect, help was available, resources were provided, and there was a timely resolution. As of 2223, parents could access their child's course information in Canvas as an observer through their ParentView account. When surveyed, higher percentages of secondary parents indicated they were aware they could access their child's Canvas account than elementary school parents. Of those who were aware, approximately half of elementary school parents accessed their child's account, while approximately two-thirds of secondary parents did. Of those who accessed their child's account, at least 79% of parents indicated accessing the information was very or somewhat useful and agreed that accessing Canvas helped them understand what their child was working on in school. Although the focus of the current evaluation was on implementation-related goals, baseline data for outcome goals related to communication and collaboration, as well as supporting student-centered practices, were analyzed to provide preliminary results. Regarding Canvas helping to promote communication and collaboration, secondary teachers had notably higher agreement percentages than grade three to five teachers. Regarding Canvas supporting student-centered practices, elementary school and middle school students had somewhat higher agreement than high school students regarding Canvas allowing them to make choices about their learning, helping them monitor their learning, and helping encourage them to think creatively. In addition, secondary teachers had higher agreement than elementary school teachers that Canvas helped them provide instruction using student-centered practices. When asked about their overall satisfaction with Canvas, relatively high percentages, 78% to 92% of administrators, ITSs, students, and parents at all levels indicated they were satisfied. Teacher satisfaction was lower, most notably at the elementary school level, with 52% of grade three through five teachers indicating they were satisfied. As a reminder, VDOE offered to provide Canvas for free for all school divisions for five years. Therefore, there was no subscription fee for Canvas in 2223. Other costs related to Canvas included the subscription fee for Mastery Connect, continued access to Schoology for teachers to transfer materials, and payments to other vendors to ensure optimal functioning. Expenses not incurred by the division, or in other words, savings, due to adopting Canvas totaled $600,000. This included the previous subscription of Schoology for students and an item bank, which is now included in the cost for Mastery Connect. Therefore, the division saved about $209,000 by adopting Canvas. Based on the results of the evaluation, it is recommended that Canvas be continued with modifications. The second recommendation is to explore further the reasons for lower satisfaction rates with Canvas among teachers, especially at the elementary school level, to identify potential solutions. The third recommendation is to ensure professional learning opportunities and support on utilizing Mastery Connect are provided for classroom teachers to have the necessary knowledge to use Mastery Connect in their classrooms. The fourth recommendation is to develop a communication plan for disseminating resolutions to secondary classroom teachers for commonly experienced issues with the grade passback process between Canvas and Synergy to ensure the process is efficient and accurate for teachers. At this time, Dr. Sharon Schubridge, Director of Instructional Technology, will share the administration's response.
Good evening. I would first like to start with, I am happy to be here to share the administration's response to the Canvas Implementation Evaluation. I would like to first say we concur with the recommendations of the program evaluation. We are excited to continue the implementation of Canvas this year. We learned a lot and have continued to enhance our training portal for teachers. The Department of Teaching and Learning intentionally shared with principals and staff last summer to limit the time on the Chromebook while students were face-to-face, especially at the elementary level. Teachers in grades K through two most often utilize CSO as their learning management tool, and CSO is an optional application for grades three through five. The Office of Instructional Technology worked with instructional technology specialists last year on the implementation of Canvas, Dr. Bach referenced Camp Canvas, and we continue to provide professional development. Several sessions at the DETAL Con this summer were offered focused on Canvas training. Referring back to Slide Four, some of you may have noticed that 59% of secondary teachers who use division instructional content, it was much lower. We had many teachers share there were no pre-made or aligned modules for use. So this past spring, we offered curriculum writing pay for teachers to submit modules they had created to be shared with the division. We will continue to work with PIA as part of the year to evaluation in 2324 and with ITSs in the building to track satisfaction and the next steps for teacher development while balancing best practice and teacher requests. Regarding Recommendation Three, based on preliminary data from ITSs last winter and in addition to professional development sessions offered last year, several resources have been created, oh, my goodness, somebody's clicking for me, thank you, sorry. I'm scared myself, sorry. I said I would click, I'm sorry, okay. It's past my bedtime, I'm getting punchy, I'm sorry. Okay, let me try that again. On the VPCPS Instructional Technology site, several additional help tools related to the applications we support at the division level have been created. When clicking on Mastery Connect, links, links the user to a full page of Mastery Connect resources broken down by elementary and secondary. Some secondary examples seen here are document and a recording of how to view the data in Mastery Connect. Lessons learned and tracker cleanup are also included. We continue to support this site as we develop more resources for our teachers. One of our math specialists provided training at DETAL Con, and the session was so successful, instructional technology specialists actually asked her to attend our October training. We will continue to provide teachers, training and resources to ITSs throughout the year to continue to support their teachers. Regarding Recommendation Four, off of that same Instructional Technology resource site under the Canvas menu, there are several best practice resources by band and quick guides. There is a link to the grade passback overview, which includes screenshots, best practices, and considerations prior to starting. Because the Department of Technology oversees the student information system, DOT has organized a Canvas to Synergy manual with step-by-step guidelines and considerations, two of which you can see here. While we have heard some of the difficulties teachers had last spring with syncing, I wanted to share one of our weekly polls. Weekly, we track data for grades and assignments that are passed between Canvas and Synergy. As you can see, in one week, there have been over 18,000 assignments and 114,000 grades passed from Canvas to Synergy. While there are still some errors or failed passes, the user is notified before the final sync to fix an issue, and the common issue types are listed for the teacher in the DOT manual. This concludes the administration's response. Dr. Bach and I are available to answer any questions.
Ms. Melnick.
Will there ever be a time that we don't have to use Synergy? We don't have to sync? Is there no grading platform in Canvas?
Okay, so there is, so inside of Canvas, inside of all of our learning management systems, there's been a place to store grades. However, Synergy is our information system and is our grade book. So while that is our grade book, we have continually tried to find a way for teachers to not have to enter them in this place and then in this location. So the grade passback has been really critical.
Yeah, okay. But frustrating at the same time for teachers who technically are, yeah, that, that step's difficult.
But in one week passed 114,000 grades, so it's not as difficult.
Yeah, I know they're getting it, but it's, I just wondered because I, I think that's the only place where grades live at the collegiate level. And I will say this again, I know I've said it 8,000 times, but this is the next step at the collegiate level. So I'm glad to see that the students are getting it and, and, and that's what the surveys showed too, that they like it. And, you know, and I offer a mea culpa for our teachers, honestly, that I'm sorry that we don't have something yet, but, you know, thanks.
Ms. Manning.
Well, I'm thrilled that the recommendation isn't to go to a new platform.
Me too.
I, I remember when Dr. Saltner was presenting this to us a couple of years ago, and he said, "It's free." And I'm like, "Okay, I like free." And I'm now a student of Canvas as well, so I understand that it is easy to use. Thank you, Dr. Saltner. But I don't understand why we're doing assessments in something different. Why aren't we using Canvas for our assessments?
So Canvas has something, Canvas quizzes, but it doesn't allow for the division assessments. It doesn't allow for the Certica Item Bank, where we have a lot of our pre-made division-level questions. So the, it's sort of like before, we had Schoology built inside of Schoology and AMP product, where we had all of the division assessments. So the Mastery Connect is our division assessment platform, allows us to see growth over time, much easier than just a Canvas quiz. The Mastery Connect is also viewable by others. The Canvas quiz only lives inside of that teacher's course, so nobody can track the data or view the data or review the data. Mastery Connect gives us the division-level comparative data in a way over what's happening in schools.
And is this Mastery Connect, is it utilized through Canvas?
They're separate products, but you can, they live together. So if, when a teacher builds their tracker, all of the assessments in the tracker show up in the students' assignments or shows up in the students' Canvas course. So it's very easy for students to get there, in and out of Canvas to Mastery Connect and back.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Callen.
Despite the image I may be projecting, I do have a life. But I would like to request again, for the benefit of the board, the notes that both of you have been presenting us tonight so that I can continue to deepen my understanding on the big picture.
Certainly.
Thank you.
She has both, she has all of it.
Ms. Brown.
So not so much a question as a comment. So on Slide 11, it shows the overall satisfaction with Canvas. And, you know, I'm happy to see that the administrators, the ITSs, the students, and the parents seem to overall like Canvas. I am a little bit disappointed on the teacher side. I understand when there's new systems put in place, I was, that sometimes it's a challenge. I had kind of been hoping these numbers would be a little bit higher. I appreciate the recommendations and I support them. I just, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to capture some more of these teachers in that process. You know, elementary school, maybe they don't use it as frequently, so, but in that middle and high school level, 66, 67%. Yeah, it's just a little lower than I would have hoped to have seen. So I look forward to seeing the updates as this progresses, and hopefully these numbers will improve. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to E, the Resolution Regarding Additional Funding for Fiscal Year 2023-24. Welcome, Crystal Page, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. The Resolution Regarding Additional Funding for Fiscal Year 2324 before you tonight is a result of the final approval of the state budget back in September. We received a calculation tool from the Virginia Department of Education on October 12th. In order to adjust to city council's timelines so we can have these additional funds appropriated by the third week of November, this resolution is on for information as well as action this evening. Oh, okay.
Let me read it now, my, my chair. Yes, do you need her to read that?
Do you read it, want to read it before?
Or we can wait.
It goes, I mean, I'm, because it goes for action tonight.
This is just information.
Yeah, colleagues, this is on information.
And then we have another resolution on action that Ms. Anderson will read.
So you'll read this when we come to action?
Okay. And Madam Chair, I do have it under action, the resolution that will be displayed on the screen, under action.
So this slide provides a timeline to where we are now. Our fiscal year 2023-24 budget was adopted by city council on May 9th. As you know, a final budget was not approved by the state by the beginning of the fiscal year of July 1st. A general assembly session was convened by the governor on September 6th. The general assembly adopted a budget that amended fiscal year 2024 direct aid distribution to school divisions, and the governor signed the Virginia State Budget on September 14th. You don't like me tonight. With the final adopted state budget, we did see a net increase in state revenue, approximately $3.4 million. As you can see on this slide, this net increase is composed of an increase in basic aid and at-risk funding, with offsetting decreases in VRS retirement, Social Security, group life, and compensation supplement. So for context, the decrease you see in the compensation supplement is due to the fact that our adopted budget, which was based on the House version, included the 2% compensation for SOQ positions effective July 1st. The state's budget includes the 2% for SOQ positions effective January 1st. This is also why you are seeing the decreases in the associated VRS, Social Security, and group life. So as you know, we implemented a large portion of the compensation study recommendations in this fiscal year's budget, not a specific raised percentage. You will see in the resolution tonight, with the additional funding, we have recommended a 2% raise to employees effective January 1st, 2024. This equates to a 1% raise since the raises for the last six months of the fiscal year. We will in turn include this additional compensation in our fiscal year 2425 budget The final state budget also included an additional $20 million in one-time state per pupil funding for the implementation of the governor's All-In Initiative. Ms. Kalushy chaired with you in workshop this evening the required uses of this additional funding. This additional funding will require us to prepare an annual report focusing on how the Division used these funds within these three areas. So our next steps, upon your approval tonight, we will present this information to city council on November 14th, and at that time, there will also be a public hearing due to the amount being requested, and on November 21st, city council is scheduled to take action. And that concludes the presentation on this resolution. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I don't see anybody's hands raised. Thank you. So we're gonna... There are no more public comments. We've finished all of those. We're going to the consent agenda. The items that are going to be presented on the consent agenda are A., the resolutions, which will be the National Military Family Appreciation Month; B., National Native American Heritage Month; C., American Education Week; and D., National School Psychology Week. B. will be the religious exemptions; C. recommendation of a general contractor for Rosemont Forest Elementary School HVAC replacement; and D. 2023... 2223 Annual Field Trip Report. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda items? If so, identify any item that should be moved to the action agenda. Okay? See and none. If there's no objections, we're going to move the item to action. Our information is requested. There's no objection, so I'm going to call for an... Call for a motion. Moved by Mrs. Franklin, and seconded by Mrs. Weems. Okay, now I need just to read our resolutions first, and then we'll vote. We'll start with the National Military Family Appreciation Month. Ms. Anderson.
National Military Family Appreciation Month of November 2023. Whereas our country owes the daily freedoms to the members of the Armed Forces, their family members and loved ones who share in their service and sacrifice; and whereas we celebrate the exceptional service, strength, and character of the approximately 11,500 military-connected youth and families of Virginia Beach City Public Schools; and whereas we acknowledge that military families face unique challenges due to deployment, reintegration, service in combat zones, and frequent relocations based on duty assignments; and whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach reaffirms their commitment to providing the resources and programs to support military-connected youth academically, socially, and emotionally; and whereas the Virginia Beach City Public School Board's Compass to 2025 Strategic Plan calls for the continued creation of opportunities for military families and community members to purposely partner with schools in supporting student achievement, aspirations, and social-emotional development; and whereas November is recognized as National Military Family Appreciation Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes November as National Military Family Appreciation Month; and be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all school staff and community members to initiate, support, and participate in appreciation activities designed to recognize the exceptional role and unique sacrifices our military-connected youth make in our nation's best interest; and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 24th day of October 2023.
Thank you. Our National Native American Heritage Month. Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Whereas the first people to inhabit North America, American Indians and Alaska natives, have profoundly shaped our country's character and cultural heritage; and whereas Virginia began celebrating American Indian Day in 1987; and whereas Virginia is home to seven federally recognized tribal nations, including the Chickahominy Indian Tribe, the Chickahominy Indian Tribe Eastern Division, Monakin Indian Nation, Nansaman Indian Nation, the Monkey Indian Tribe, Rappahannock Tribe, and Upper Mattapani Indian Tribe, as well as four additionally state-recognized tribes, including Nottaway Indian Tribe, Mattapani Indian Tribe, Nottaway Indian Tribe of Virginia, and Patawamak Indian Tribe of Virginia; and whereas Native American men and women contribute to all areas of life in Virginia and the City of Virginia Beach, including but not limited to government, business, arts and sciences, medicine, education, law enforcement, and the military; and whereas through the study of Native Americans and their traditions and values inspired, and continue to inspire, the ideals of self-governance and determination that are the framework of our nation; and whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, through its core values and educational equity policy, are committed to the cross-cultural competence within our school division; now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of November 2023 as National Native American Heritage Month; and be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and celebrate American Indians in Virginia, whose abilities and contributions strengthen our city and schools' diverse culture; be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Ms. Melnick. American Education Week.
Whereas American Education Week is a time to honor and celebrate the dedication, hard work, and unwavering commitment of all individuals who contribute to the success of our educational system, including substitute teachers and education support professionals; and whereas substitute teachers and education support professionals play a crucial role in ensuring the smooth operation of schools, providing essential services, and supporting the overall educational experience of students; and whereas substitute teachers often step in at a moment's notice to ensure that the continuity of education is maintained when the classroom teachers are absent, fostering a stable and productive learning environment; and whereas education support professionals, including paraprofessionals, food services, custodial, and maintenance services, security services, transportation services, and various other roles, are instrumental in providing invaluable assistance to educators and contributing to the development and well-being of students; and whereas the dedication and commitment of substitute teachers and education support professionals extend far beyond their job descriptions, as they often serve as mentors, role models, and advocates for the students they interact with; and whereas during American Education Week, November 13th through 17th, 2023, the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the contributions of substitute teachers and education support professionals to our education system and the future of our nation; and now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the week of November 13th through 17th, 2023, as American Education Week in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools; and be it further resolved that the contributions of substitute teachers and education support professionals in Virginia Beach, Virginia... Virginia Beach City Public Schools be recognized during instructional time in the presence of students on Education Professionals Day, November 15th, 2023, and Substitute Educators Day on November 17th, 2023; and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 24th day of October 2023.
Finally, the National School Psychology Week, read by Mr. Callen.
Whereas Virginia Beach City Public School psychologists support the development of academic and social-emotional skills for all students, thus allowing each student to reach their full potential; and whereas school psychologists are valuable members of the multidisciplinary team serving schools, providing a wide range of services to students, parents, and staff; and whereas school psychologists are actively committed to helping students recognize their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to their development and mental wellness; and whereas school psychologists help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social-emotional growth of their children; and whereas school psychologists work with teachers and other educators to help in meeting the individual needs of students; and whereas school psychologists use their expertise in child development, mental health, community resources, and crisis intervention to develop and implement interventions to support educational success; whereas with this shared approach to supporting student learning and social-emotional growth, psychologists are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success and wellness in school and life. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the first full week of November 2023 as National School Psychology Week in Virginia Beach City Public Schools; and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 24th day of October 2023.
Thank you. Now I call for a vote to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. We are now on 15 Action, Personnel Report, Administrative Appointments. I call for a motion to approve the October 24th, 2023 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Mrs. Manning, and seconded by Mrs. Martin. Our Mr. Culpepper, are they both?
Sorry.
Mr. Culpepper? Any discussion? Okay. I call for a vote to approve the October 24th, 2023 Personnel Report, Administrative Appointments. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Dr. Robertson, are there any administrative appointments?
There are. Madam Chair, first up is Danielle Williams. Danielle Williams is currently Assistant Principal at Glenwood Elementary School, and prior to that, she served for three years as an Assistant Principal at Sea-Tac Elementary School, and prior to that, as a math coach and a teacher. And we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next principal at White Oaks Elementary School. Next up, thank you. We're pleased to announce that Nicole Livis, who's had a number of years as a news anchor in local TV media with Wavy TV 10, and now with WVAC, has agreed to become the next Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer in the Department of Communications and Community Engagement to start December 1st.
Yeah.
That's a big smile on me. And then finally, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Jennifer Morris, currently an Assistant Principal at Corporate Landing Middle School, to be the new coordinator of the Technology Academy at Lanstown High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. We are now at the Budget Resolution Regarding a Fiscal Year 2223 Reversion and Revenue Sharing Formula Reconciliation. We're going to ask Mrs. Page for her presentation first, and then Mrs. Anderson will read the actual resolution.
Good evening again. To update you on the change of the Revenue Sharing Formula reconciliation, we became aware of this last Thursday evening. During the city's review of the allocation of real estate tax revenue, they realized that an incorrect amount was allocated to the dedicated special revenue funds, Parks and Rec, Agricultural Reserve Program, and the Flood Protection Program. In order to correct this, they had to adjust real estate tax revenue in the city's general fund and move those funds. This resulted in a loss of roughly $4 million in revenue to the city's general fund, which in return had a negative impact on the school's revenue sharing amount. The revenue sharing amount for fiscal year 2023 is now a reduction of $4,248,024 versus the original reduction of $2,568,778. We have taken this additional decrease of $1,679,246 from the renovations and replacements various Phase III project, as shown on this slide, which I will now need to get to. I'm not going to go through all this. This is the original presentation. I'm going to get there. So you can't see that very well. Sorry about that. But in that Phase III project, we originally were putting in $4,607,922, and now we are only putting in $2,928,676 to this project. So you'll see at the top of this slide, the net amount available for reappropriation now is $26,140,809. So that concludes the update prior to approving this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Now, Ms. Anderson, would you please read the resolution?
Whereas on September 26th, 2023, the School Board was presented with a summary of the unaudited financial statements for fiscal year 2022-2023, year ending June 30th, 2023, showing the reversion amount to the city's general fund; and whereas $21,535,205 is the amount of school operating reversion funds available, excluding debt service and revenues over/under budget; and whereas $3,962,133 is the amount remaining in debt service due to the timing of bond sales, increasing the school operating reversion amount to $25,497,338; and whereas $4,407,320... I'm sorry, let me repeat that. Whereas $4,407,324 came in as additional revenue over the appropriated budget, increasing the school operating reversion amount to $29,904,662; and whereas $264,685 reverted from the athletics fund, and $219,486 reverted from the Green Run Collegiate Charter School Fund; and whereas the total amount available for reappropriation is $30,388,833; and whereas the city is currently indicating fiscal year 2022-23 revenue under budget of $4,248,024 based on the revenue sharing formula; and whereas the net funding available for reappropriation is $26,140,809; and whereas the administration recommends the following for the available funds, in the amount of $26,140,809, broken down such as $14,890,809 to be reappropriated to the fiscal year 2023-24 Capital Improvement Program, $3,900... $3,962,133 to be transferred in the form of pay-as-you-go funding with a corresponding reduction in authorized but unissued public facility revenue bonds; $5 million to be transferred in the form of pay-as-you-go funding for Project 1-018: Renovations and Replacements, HVAC Phase 3; $2,928,676 to be transferred in the form of pay-as-you-go funding for Project 1-020: Renovations and Replacements, Various Phase 3; $3 million to be transferred in the form of pay-as-you-go funding for Project 1-030: Payroll System Replacement; $11 million to be reappropriated in the School Reserve Special Revenue Fund to be set aside for Projects 1-015: Prentice and High School Replacement, $5,500,000; and 1-028: Betty F. Weems, Bayside 6th Grades, 4th through 6th, Replacement, $5,500,250,000 to be reappropriated to the athletics fund. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach approves the recommended uses of reversion funds as presented by the administration; and be it further resolved that the school board requests that the city council approve the reappropriation of reversion funds shown above; and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, and the clerk of the board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of city council, and city manager, and the city clerk, approved by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this 24th day of October 2023.
Okay. I call for a motion to approve the Budget Resolution Regarding Fiscal Year 2223 Reversion and Revenue Sharing Formula Reconciliation. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Anderson. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Martin. Is there any discussion? CNN, I call for a vote to approve the Budget Resolution Regarding Fiscal Year 2223 Reversion and Revenue Sharing Formula Reconciliation. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Now we're on C, Resolution Regarding the Additional Funding for Fiscal Year 2023, '24. I call for a motion to approve the Resolution Regarding the Additional Funding for Fiscal Year 2023, '24. Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Weems. Mrs. Weems, would you please read the resolution?
Whereas the fiscal year 2023, '24 budget was adopted by the city council on May 9th, 2023; and whereas the City of Virginia Beach has adopted budget ordinance appropriated funds to the school board of the City of Virginia Beach; and whereas the Virginia General Assembly was unable to agree on budget amendments during the legislative session; and whereas Governor Yonkin convened a special session of the 2023 General Assembly on September 6th, 2023; and whereas the 2023 Special Session 1 General Assembly adopted a budget that amends FY 2024 direct aid distributions to school divisions; and whereas these amendments include, among other items, a 2% compensation supplement to school divisions for standards of quality, SOQs, instructional and support positions, effective January 1st, 2024; an increase in funded SOQ support positions; and one-time flexible grant funding to support the All-In Virginia State Plan; and whereas Governor Yonkin signed the Virginia State Budget on September 14th, 2023; and whereas state funds for the school operating funds will increase $3,408,66, and state funds for the categorical grant funds will increase $20,037,157. And whereas the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests an additional appropriation of $3,408,66 into the school operating fund, and $20,037,157 into the categorical grants fund; and whereas appropriations of funds must be approved by the city council prior to the expenditure of funds by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach; and now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests an additional appropriation of $3,408,66 into the school operating fund; and be it further resolved, these funds will be used to provide an additional 2% compensation increase to all full-time equivalent employees, effective January 1st, 2024; and be it further resolved, the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests an additional appropriation of $20,037,157 into the categorical grants fund; and be it further resolved, these funds will be used to follow the governor's recommended focus on an all-in approach that focuses 70% on grades 3 through 8 high-intensity tutoring, 20% on the Virginia Literacy Act, and 10% on chronic absenteeism; and further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach approves and affirms the necessary appropriation and recommended uses of these funds; and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, and the clerk of the board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of the city council, the city manager, and the city clerk, adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this 24th day of October 2023.
Do I have any discussion on this resolution? CNN, I call for a vote to approve the Resolution Regarding Additional Funding for Fiscal Year 2023, '24. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. We are now at 16. Our committee organization are board reports. Do we have any school board members have any reports on their committees? It's a reminder, this is a time for short reports. The school board members may file full reports with the clerk to be distributed to other school board members. Mrs. Weems.
Just a quick update on the Workforce Development Committee with city council that Ms. Martin and I are on. We've been very busy. We're going to have recommendations to the board probably in the spring, March, or April timeframe. But we've been discussing things like a potential workforce development lab school, a maritime trades academy, legislative barriers to our workforce development opportunities, different certification requirements, changing those. We have a lot of ideas for our legislative committee to pursue, and then also existing space, repurposed space, and future space for trades and skills classrooms. So a lot of very good conversation is being had around that table, and we'll again share the recommendations with you in the spring. Also, the Jericho Road Committee, we've, Ms. Martin and I have kind of decided to start that in January. We're gonna convene that committee in January. Thank you so much.
Good. Any other reports? Ms. Tony Otto?
I do have a handout that one of the speakers did leave for the school board members.
Okay, thank you. I also am on the Virginia Beach Education Foundation Board, and they have the, the turkey bowl that's coming up. And I know I can, I'm gonna tell them about this again, but November 18th, 2023, it's gonna be at Kinsleyville High School, Sheriff Rocky Holcomb's Turkey Bowl, in partnership with the Virginia Beach Education Foundation. All proceeds will go to the Beach Bags Program, which feeds Virginia Beach City Public School students. It'll be a $5 entry fee at the door. VB first responders versus VB City Public Schools, so if anybody wants to get involved.
Well, let me just tell you, I am recruiting. We have four ex-NFL players that work for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. They will be playing.
Super. Okay, anybody else? So let us, let us-
Flag football.
So let me know, guys. Or let, or let Dr. Robertson know. Thank you. Okay. That is all. We don't have to return to any informal workshop or closed sessions, and so I adjourned this meeting at 9:57.